Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Brogan?
Here.
Councilmember Varner?
Present.
Vice President Davis?
I'm present.
Councilmember Boardy?
Present.
Councilmember Furlic?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President Scott?
Absent.
Vice President.
I appreciate that. Okay, we'd like to have our report from the Subcommittee on Minutes, please.
Mr. President, there will be no report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. The President is absent and he would need to throw us to sign off.
I understand. So we will have two Subcommittees on minutes at our next meeting in March.
That's okay.
Okay? Thank you. Before we have this, no special business, but we'd like to ask the social rep students from Andrews University, Professor Desri Davis, as their class. We'd like for all the social rep to please stand. They're coming to visit us as part of their... It's always great to be a social rep. Take it from me. All righty. Glad to have you here with us tonight. Seeing that there's no special business, we do have the presence of Dr. James Mueller. I thought I saw him. He's in the back representing the city of South Bend, the administration, and we're glad to have him. And the other team members who are representing us here, the several of the leadership back in the back. Thank you. So there will be no other reports from the city. I'd like to now rise for the Committee of the Whole.
Some more?
Uh-huh. Our flag will say hi.
Hi.
Our fellows. It is carried. Let's take a look.
The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is a portion of the meeting where the full council sits as a committee. During each ordinance, the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or opposed. Your comments will be limited per ordinance to five minutes. With the city clerk, please read 217.
217. Public hearing on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and taking a special exception for property located at a 10-acre tract located along Eddie Street and the west side of Georgiana Street between Napoleon and Howard, Councilman of District Number Four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a presenter? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a committee report?
The Georgia United Nation Committee met this afternoon, and we bring this to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Angela Smith in the Airplane Commission with offices on the 11th floor of this building. I think we're having some technical difficulties, so I'll go ahead and proceed. There. They answered it out. The petitioner is seeking to rezone the 10 acres highlighted here in red on the map. It's essentially the area of south of Napoleon, north of Howard, between Georgiana on the east and the alley that falls between Eddie Street and Francis on the west. As I mentioned, you can see the site highlighted here. It's just the properties in red. Again, a view to show in relation to the existing development that has happened in recent years. There are currently three zoning districts within the property, MF1, SF1, and MU mixed use. The petitioner is seeking to rezone the entire development to MU mixed use to allow for what's been called Eddie Street Phase Two development, a mixed-use development that complements the development to the north. The site is mostly vacant. There's one structure left within the petition area. This is a view from Howard Street. And again, further north from St. Vincent Street, looking north, you can see Eddie Street Phase One in the background of the illustration here. This is an image looking south on Georgiana. The petition area would be on the right in this picture. And as you look north on Georgiana, you can see Eddie Street Phase One within the distance of the development would be on the left in this image. The development, as I mentioned, is a 10-acre site with five distinct blocks. Block A is in the northwest quadrant. It contains a retail establishment shown very red. The remaining property, the pink and the orange on the screen, is a kind of a mixed use with either flex or residential space on the first floor and then multifamily residential above the remainder of the floor with a subsurface parking structure and some courtyards in the rear along the alley. Block B contains that same kind of mix along Eddie Street, a flex space and multifamily residential. And then renting on Georgiana, they're proposing townhomes. A special exception in front of this evening addresses the ability for them to do those as detached, single-family if they choose to. A detached, single-family is a special exception in the MU mixed-use district, so that would, this would allow them to do that if the market decides that they should be detached instead of attached townhomes, as are shown here. Blocks A and B are proposed to be four stories with the exception of those fronting on Georgiana, those that do not have a height variance, so those would have to comply with the 40 feet and no more than three stories as per the zoning ordinance for MU mixed use. Blocks C and D are primarily multifamily residential with the, on block C, you have the subsurface parking in the courtyard in the rear, and then block D has garages and surface lot, and then the, again, the properties fronting on Georgiana are proposed to be single-family residential townhomes. Block E continues that same development, but adds the Robinson Learning Center as a rebuild from the existing location as it is now. The entire development would be continuation of Eddie Street Phase One, as I had mentioned. This comes to you from the Area Planning Commission with a favorable recommendation. Rezoning the property to MU mixed use will allow for the development of the second phase of Eddie Street Commons, which will provide a mixed-use development that complements and supports the existing development and surrounding neighborhood. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. With that, is there a petitioner? Please state your name and address.
I'm Doug Kirby with Cary Rector, 30th South Meridian Street in Indianapolis. And I'm, as Angela said, we're here to present this second phase of Eddie Street Commons as a continuation of Phase One, and it's really meant to build up the success of Phase One and continue to expand the development into the neighborhood, but with the opportunity as a transition. We've provided flex units, I think as Angela referred to or referenced there in the pink in here. Those flex units could be used for boutiques or galleries or small service, like insurances and other facilities, or flexible enough to be residential as well. I think Angela also mentioned the residential along Georgiana, the single-family residential along Georgiana. We've committed to that, to the neighborhood, and in the sufficient to be residential, further ready to commit that to be two-story residential, even though it would be allowed to be followed within the zoning district. We've worked with Notre Dame and the surrounding communities in numerous informational meetings over the last several months, discussions along those lines, to come up with this project the way it is now, to really try to complement the surrounding areas, both Phase One as well as the rest of the surrounding areas in the Triangle and the neighborhoods to the west. I think Angela presented everything, and I'm interested to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council for a presenter or petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? And please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Tim Sexton. I work at University of Notre Dame as Associate Vice President of Public Affairs. The land being utilized in this identified connection...
Sorry. Please state your address, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. 405 Main Building, Notre Dame, Indiana. Apologize, yeah.
Thank you.
The area that we're talking about this evening is owned by the university, and we have engaged Kite Realty Group, the developer of Phase One, to develop Phase Two. In addition to the numerous planning meetings that occurred with the city and as well on campus, Kite held public meetings with the residents and partners of the Northeast Neighborhood. Kite electronically invited residents to the Harder Heights list serve, the Northeast Neighborhood Council, the NNRO, the Northeast Neighborhood Revitalization Organization, the Triangle Homeowners Association, really trying to engage as much of those residents that are going to be impacted by this project as much as possible. And we're very grateful that they did that because I do think that the project that you're looking at today benefits benefited from those conversations. We're really appreciative of that. So on behalf of the university, we fully endorse this plan for Eddie Street Commons Phase Two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paul Meyer. I'm Vice President of the Northeast Neighborhood Revitalization Organization, and I'm also Chief Executive Officer of the South Bend Clinic as a member and sponsor organization of the NNRO, address 211 North Eddie Street. I'm here on behalf of the NNRO, which has unanimously endorsed this project. It is a textbook case of urban planning from the commencement of Eddie Street Commons Phase One now to Phase Two. It is a program that enhances the quality of life and the quality of the residential aspects of our community while bringing economic benefit to the entire community. It combines, as you've seen in the plans, the opportunity to live, work, and play in one neighborhood. It supports and enhances the mission of the NNRO. We've reviewed this in detail, and as Mr. Sexton noted, through numerous opportunities that Kite Realty put out to the neighbors, the residents, the community at large, there were, this is just another textbook case of engagement of the citizenry. Through that dialogue and through numerous comments and questions that came out, enhancements to the project were good. Kite was responsive to the neighborhood, to the community, and we believe and wholeheartedly endorse this unanimously for council approval.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jessica McCray, and I live at 1104 Dewey Avenue. And as a member of the Triangle Homeowners Association and the board, we fully endorse this, and I'll just reiterate what Mr. Sexton pointed out, that as a community, we felt very heard at these public meetings. We shared a lot of feedback, both grievances and praise, and we feel like our grievances were addressed completely. So we're very pleased with what they've presented here tonight, and we're excited about potential, and we look forward to seeing it move forward, fully endorsing it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard Pierce. I'm a professor at University of Notre Dame. I'm also the co-chair of the Parents Advisory Committee for the Robinson Community Learning Center, and a parent of one of the children who uses the programs therein. We, as a board, unanimously support this ordinance amendment. We have done the implausible, invented space, and will do the improbable, increase space. Thank you.
And please state your address, sir.
120 East Wing Street. Mr. Kelly's is 3.
Good evening. My name is Perry Williams, and I live at 601 East Howard Street. I would like to say that the community, Robinson Community Learning Center, has been a great, great pillar to our neighborhood, to the community. I had five girls and four boys to go to the center. The help and the learn, and the learning they received from the programs there will never be forgotten. Eight graduated from high school, six went to college. I now have one that's in IU Plowton that will graduate in May of this year. I credit this all to the support of the Robinson Center. I appreciate it, and I'm thankful and grateful of the Robinson Center. I know the mothers and the fathers that have chosen and went there feel the same way that I do. Our children were given opportunities to take in all the programs that were presented at the center. The opportunities was they visited, colleges, out of town, they had time, had a chance to coach, countries, all kinds of sports, and many programs with the help of the Robinson Center. My children wouldn't have been able to go if it wasn't for their help. The center welcomes all people. They want to help prepare the students and the community with the goals that they have and their future. When you come to the center, you will find compassion for faculty and staff with a smile and with much love and kindness to all people. And I want to thank you for the time that you've given me, and I want to say, without the center, I don't know what my family would have done. Thank you.
Seeing no one else speaking in favor, any of those wishing to speak in opposition, again, please state your name and address.
I am S.J. Sabo with offices on Missoula Avenue. You know, this, what started out to be, and was promoted as, a little village, commercial area for Notre Dame, has turned out in execution, thanks to developers who settle for less than the most they can get, into six, seven blocks, square blocks of downtown Indianapolis. And they are right. This is an exercise in urban planning, all right. The only problem is it's happening in the wrong spot. This thing never should have been allowed to get out of hand like this. It's sapping energy and lifeblood from downtown South Bend and just to feed Notre Dame City without them having to put out a dime or give up any land. South Bend is the loser here with this. The neighbors may have come to terms with it, but the city never will and will suffer always because of it. It's taking away from the lifeblood of downtown, and people need to realize that.
Anyone else wishing to...
My name is Jessica Payne. I live at 1119 North Francis Street, which is just a block from the current Eddie Street Commons. And when this, the first phase started, many neighbors, you know, we raised our concerns then about the, the parking situation that may occur. We said then that, you know, unfortunately, people don't like parking in garages, and they certainly don't like to pay the privilege for the privilege of it. We saw that as being a real concern. We worried about bars being placed there. We knew that this was, you know, a development truly designed for Notre Dame students. It houses them. It's what they want to see. They want fast food restaurants, and they want bars, and that's what we got. This is far from a great live-work type of community. I had that actually before Eddie Street came about. When I walked to work every day, I enjoyed my neighborhood. I enjoyed my neighbors. I got to keep my windows and doors open all the time. Now, unfortunately, much of what I feared has come to fruition. I had to lock up my house because all I listened to at night is truly the yelling and screaming of kids and people coming and going from the bars that are parking up and down my street. Now you're going to add another 400 and some apartments. As it is now, I have people that live in the apartments that, that don't want to pay the extra fee to park in the garage, so they just simply spill over into the neighborhood. It's already become somewhat of a parking garage. And with over 600 more bedrooms, and I state it that way because it's not 400 apartments, it's 600 and some bedrooms, they will mostly go to students. It is very high rent, which means it will mostly go to students of families with some degree of means. A lot of those kids have cars. Without actually putting language into this bill that is going to help mitigate that, you are essentially, you're writing off my neighborhood. It is going to become nothing more than a wasteland for student rentals because I'm not going to be able to sell my house to a resident. I'm absolutely sure of that. They're going to pull up to my neighborhood, they're going to see all those cars, they're going to realize, they're going to hear the people coming and going from the bars, and they're going to say, you know what? Maybe this isn't really what I want. Couple blocks in is great for me. I am afraid, again, I'm going to wind up selling my house eventually, when I do sell it, to somebody who's here six, seven days a week or a year for football weekends, maybe graduation. It may even turn into a student rental itself, as the house next to me did. I don't know what to expect. But if we simply go on the word of Kite, who's true, I mean, their, their whole vision is they have to make back their money. I've been told, we have to report to our stockholders, you know? It's not about, it's about the bottom line for them. So they don't care about my neighborhood, and they don't care about figuring out the parking scenario. But if we don't put it, structure it in place that forces that to come along with this, again, you will be writing off a big chunk of a neighborhood that's been there long before Notre Dame ever thought to spread its wings beyond its boundaries. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in opposition, the public portion is closed. The presenter and petitioner have an opportunity for rebuttal. About five minutes.
I don't need that much. It's Doug Kirby again, for the record. The only thing I want to point out is, I don't know if it was clearly addressed, but the southern blocks, C, D, and E, primary focus on those is going to be rentals for graduate students of the university, not your typical students, I think, that you're used to seeing around here. I think parking, parking concern in the neighborhood and the surrounding areas is a valid concern. However, I believe that is probably a concern that's been there for a while before Eddie Street, and I think that's something that probably needs to be addressed at the city level as well.
Okay. With that, we'll turn back to the council. Are there any comments? Yes?
I don't know if this is the proper place, but during the committee meeting this afternoon, we did receive some information from the administration in regards to ways in which to address the parking concern. So maybe we could hear from them as well, just to make sure there's part of that.
Sure. I believe either area plan or Brian, you had a test base on the possibility of permit parking in that area?
Evening, Brian Plasky, Director of Development, Office on Fortune Floor of Building. Couple things going on here. One, we have a traffic study that's currently underway that will take into account not only parking, but also just traffic flow within the area writ large. We had some concerns about traffic on Howard, for example, that we can see by the study what mitigation might be best suited for that place. Also, in response to questions about permit parking, the one thing to note is that the retail will not be as intensive in this unit, so the amount of retail on the first phase would not be replicated in the second. In that instance, you would have residential, obviously, demand for parking that's largely taken care of by the garage underneath the building on the west side, and then the surface parking on the east side. But should permit parking still be an option? We explored this with the area around Forewoods Field. It's a simple procedure. You go to the Board of Works. There's a traffic study that's done there to count cars who needed for residential and other parking, and provided the numbers are met, the board would approve a special permitted use in that zone that would be laid out. Yes?
Thank you for your report. When will you be able to get back to us regarding the preliminary findings of the traffic study? And when will you be able to get back to us regarding whether or not this project should go for the public works in order for them to have permit parking?
In the traffic study, I think within a month, we should have the results that will tell us in good, in good ways how best to mitigate some of that traffic. I think we'll have a conversation with the developer about the onsite parking necessary for the residential. If there's concern that the residential would not be able to be taken care of onsite and there may be overflow necessary, we can then proceed down the public permitting.
So we will have all of our findings, all of our information well in advance before this is developed, is that correct?
Yes. We're doing this all now in conjunction with the rest of the engineering and the preliminary work that's being done for the entirety of the site, not just this one issue. So there's, there's a lot of work to do.
Finally, how would the council be made aware of that? And how would the neighbors in the area, the market, neighborhood who has concerns with their, how would she be made aware of the findings and the progress toward having residential permits?
In the case of the parking study, we do post all those that we do online in various places. We can make council aware of where that is, equip you with the link to share with any and all of your constituents. That's on the parking study. Should there be a need for some type of permit parking, the notices for the Board of Works meeting where anyone can come and speak on that matter would be, A, posted, but that's another thing we can send to council in the form of a link to make your constituents, you know, aware of that meeting time and date and the process if they have to go down if they wanted to be involved in any way.
So our neighbor here, you contact your office to monitor everything?
Sure.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Just to follow up on that, Brian, the criteria for the Board of Public Works, I mean, is there a way to facilitate this application by the neighborhood, your department, or could Kite, you know, with the study, actually follow up once everything comes online? Because it's one thing to look at this point in time now, you know, prior to everything rolling out, but whether it's when it comes online or ongoing concerns or new concerns that creep up, you know, it's one thing to, you know, look at it now, but can we put something in place? Because as you had stated earlier, or the developer had said, you know, there have been issues for some time. So I understand that that's what we're looking at now, but, you know, prospectively, what can be done? And is there a way to facilitate this as, you know, changes have already been made to the plan, listening to the neighbors? If this is a real concern, maybe there's a way to bring back the neighbors into the actual... So I guess I'm asking a little bit about your, the focus and how you go about your studies. How engaging is it with, with the actual neighbors?
Yes, so two parts. I think, on the one hand, I think the first question to answer is whether or not there'll be a need for additional, say, street or other parking for the, for the residential units that are going to go in if that can't be taken care of onsite, because then certainly it'll need to be addressed. I think much like the example of Quigley Street, where there was some concern about it being open and a thoroughfare closed, the developer held a town hall. We could do something similar in that case if it was determined, A, we're going to need some additional capacity here. As to the parking study, we're trying to be as anticipatory as we can. For example, we're taking into account, if you look at the gray on the south, southernmost portion there where it says "future," we're trying to take into account some retail use within the traffic study, I think, knowing, like, there's going to be traffic pulling into those parking lots. What does that do for the traffic? So we're trying to take that into account as we do this traffic study, just using ballpark numbers of existing traffic and then adding a bit on top of that to come to a conclusion about what we think some traffic flow would be in there, should that space be utilized.
Okay. And then a quick follow-up. So how about any consideration of security patrols, upping that, adjusting that? You know, what was mentioned was what I'll characterize as unaverly behavior, you know, particularly in the evening hours.
We're talking about Saturdays.
Not on Saturdays. Not on Saturdays. But, I mean, what, maybe address, and I know there's, from the district, there's, there's a lot of organizations that neighbors can interface with, you know, get involved in. So, you know, again, looking at some ongoing conversations to...
Yeah. I think, as someone who's been a member of the NNRO on the city's behalf for a while, we have been fortunate to have a very good relationship with the police chief, as well as the officers that work that beat at various portions of the day. They come to the neighborhood organization meetings, they're frequently seen out of their vehicles and interacting with folks in the neighborhood. So we hope to, first of all, I think, continue that. Should there be any issues that would pop up in areas of specific concern, I think, again, from the community investment standpoint, we would certainly reach out to Chief Ruskowski, whom we've had a very positive relationship with, and ask for some, perhaps, targeted enforcement in those areas, if that's what made the most sense. Herefore, we haven't seen a need for that in the existing phasing, except maybe some people might stay on Saturdays at certain times of the year, but past that, I think we would simply have, have a way to create that partnership even, even stronger with the police force that we have in the area now.
Brian, just back to parking. I don't, I don't think generally it's an issue of capacity, so we find there's plenty of capacity for the project. It's students or other residents choosing not to pay for parking in the garage, obviously cheaper and easier to just pull onto the street in neighborhoods that, you know, that somebody's foot show. So is there potential, is capacity the only criteria? So if, you know, the study shows there's plenty of capacity, is there still some way we can look at something like permit parking or something that could maybe at that issue?
Yes. I mean, in essence, the issue by the ballpark was essentially that there was some capacity, but people who live there and wanted, you know, maybe not a 25-minute walk to their, to their home or apartment, wherever it may be, couldn't do that. So there's a proximity piece involved in that as well. And if it's basically that the use is kind of crowding out folks who have residential uses in that particular space, there's a case to be made in the Board of Works that we should, you know... And sometimes time limits are used, so it can be open at some times, maybe more restricted at others. This was specifically thought of in that example, again.
Right. Thank you. With that, today...
Just one more follow-up question, my head with the parking. Are there ways to incentivize the, the parking in the garages, whether it's inclusive in rent or, you know, I'm getting at...
It's funny, actually, in between committee and now, someone made a suggestion about just increased signage for the public further out, not just within the actual space on Eddie Street in front of the retail that you have. So I think first and foremost, we should do that. As to certain incentives, I would be happy to... As to certain incentives, I would be happy to speculate on what those could be. I don't know that it's my place to do so, but certainly there could be certain times and hours that could be more, you know, susceptible to increased incentives and things like that. I think that a councilman, tell your question, that's only going to be prevented in one way, shape, or form. I mean, ideally, right, with all these apartments coming online, you don't want people living there, so they just park there as well. But should that be the case, certainly we'll be able to go through that other process at that point.
See no other comments? I'll entertain a motion from the council. And, oh, I'm sorry, yes, there's a special...
...point of recommendation that could be incorporated into your motion.
Thank you.
I would recommend a motion to the effect that the bill be approved, condition two and subject upon written, the written commitment that that portion of the real estate abutting Georgiana Street be developed for two-story residential and open space use.
So moved. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. City, oh, could I entertain a motion to continue 317 indefinitely?
I would like to make a motion to send amended version of Bill 0217 to the full council.
Oh, no, we just did that.
With favorable, we voted on amend that.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, no. She said it was favorable recommendation with the...
Oh, I made a favorable recommendation.
I'm pretty sure it was. Favorable with, favorable with written commitments.
Who made the favorable?
There was a motion to Aladeen, right? We'll make sure. Aladeen?
Yes.
I apologize. You said a motion was for favorable recommendations subject to written commitments, correct?
Yeah. It was favorable recommendation for most of the...
Written commitments.
Yeah. No, you're on two different...
She stated the motion...
She can make a motion.
No, but then it was so moved and then someone seconded.
I want to make sure I didn't hear. I want to make sure the record is clear.
Yep, I appreciate it. I'll now entertain a motion to continue 317 indefinitely.
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 817?
817. Public hearing on an ordinance initiated by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 21, Article 3, Section 2103 of the South Bend Municipal Code by adding a new subpart, Section 2103.06B or C, to increase the maximum building height permitted in the CBD districts located between the St. Joseph River and the East Race Waterway.
I'd like to make a motion to hear the substitute version of Bill 08-17.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Is there a committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The zoning authorization committee met this afternoon, and we bring this report to you with no recommendation at this time.
Thank you. Is there a presenter? Please state your name and address.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Elizabeth from the Area Plan Commission's office located on the 11th floor of this building. The text amendment required this evening is to address the height within the central business district, specifically in the area highlighted here in red, which is commonly referred to as the island. The island is defined as the area that is east of the St. Joseph River but west of the East Race Waterway. It's highlighted here, you can see the island here. The proposed text amendment would not affect the heights in the area west of the St. Joseph River or the heights of the central business district properties located on the east side of the East Race River, Waterway. Too many easts in there, that's a tongue twister there. The proposed text amendment would increase the height within the island to 150 feet. That would, there was no reference to the stories, as we mentioned earlier in committee. This comes to you from the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a petitioner? And then I'll open up her question after. Please state your name and address.
My name is Oliver Davis, Councilman for the District 6 District, 1801 Nash Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46613. I along with you, Councilman Gavin Furk, and also with Tim Scott, who cannot be here tonight, are the sponsors of this bill. So we're glad to bring this bill to you tonight for hopefully your favorable consideration and passage. In 2008, 2008 was an interesting year. I remember well my first year on the council. And you know something over these last few years? As your zoning representative on the area plan, there's been an interesting situation, which has been a good situation. We've had development after development after development after development after development. 2008 and 2009, a lot of times you wouldn't have thought that would have happened. There were people who were publishing that we had a dying city. We had a dying city. You know, when I go to visit with churches and there's no sound of babies and kids running all over the place, I have concerns because there's no future. But when you have kids and you have children and you have everything else and people have to make adjustments all over the place because you have all these young people coming in, it's made cause some confusion, it may force the leadership to make some changes, but in the future, they have a future because of the fact that they have a growing city and they have a growing church. Same thing here. It's an honor to have a lot of developers, because even though they have their egos and they change and they fight against each other all over the place and it causes a lot of challenges, but it's a wonderful experience to have in a city. There are many cities who are around us who would not want to have that, who would want to have that. They're jealous of that. And we have that opportunity here. We have bet on this issue, several issues, and this gives us a broader situation, not just focusing on Commerce Center, but on this whole island, that we can see growth. We can see growth from the fact that some say, well, it's not the height that caused it to have problems, that it could have happened anyway. But for some reason, all the developers that are coming now are looking past 60 feet, looking past 90 feet. I, as a councilman, should not just sit back and say what their limitations should be and how big their buildings are. We should have some kind of say-so in that. But really, it is a wonderful situation to be having when you have developers and neighbors coming. And this is the kind of thing that a city wants. I'd rather have these kind of reports and these kind of discussions than just a situation of a dying city. So I'm thankful tonight to share with you that the whole island would be looking at 150 feet. That would cover down from Sykes Park to Commerce Center up to where we have Oliver Davis with the apartments there. They have made some changes too. And a lot of the concerns that the apartments had was when we were dealing with it at 12 stories, over 170, 172 feet. When they came down to 150 feet, they wrote a letter of support. A lot of this was seen in our last compromise that we did where we had 71 votes because of the fact that we worked with the neighborhoods. We've had many meetings, and the closest ones over there said, we've come down to nine stories, very good, it helps down with the shattering and other issues that they were raising. Does it eliminate it all? No. But we also live in a world where, outside of this summer, this winter that we've had this set, we pass shattering all the time a lot of times. But we've had a good year so far. So I'm very thankful to, at this time, to hopefully bring this bill that covers all of these issues. At this time, I'd like for you in your seat to share your thoughts. We were here from our attorney, and we also were then here from Tim Corcoran from the city to share his thoughts, and then I'll come back up to answer questions.
Sure. Thank you, Oliver, and thank you for the consideration by the council. This ordinance is in response to community demand as well as neighborhood demand, especially from neighbors in the Howard Park neighborhood and neighbors who live in close proximity. We talk of a comprehensive plan. This fits within a vast majority of the comprehensive plan, which calls for mixed-use, increased density. It calls for amenities such as restaurants, grocery stores, pharmacies. So with that, unfortunately, to this point, mixed-use development has not been able to occur on the island with the current 60-foot restriction, and the only proposed mixed-use developments have exceeded that 60-foot requirement. So in order to achieve the vision for the comprehensive plan and to achieve mixed-use development, to achieve density, to achieve amenities such as retail, restaurants, grocery stores, and pharmacies, we think that this amendment provides the best opportunity for the vision of the comprehensive plan to be achieved. And with that, I believe we'll turn it to the city and...
Attorney, in terms of your comments regarding the substitute?
The substitute ordinance was...
Give me a microphone, please.
The substitute ordinance was done in the suggestion of Area Plan Commission to simply make the text appear in accordance with that of the zoning ordinance. So it's a insignificant amendment, in my opinion, and I would support it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tim Corcoran, I'm the Director of Planning for South Bend, 14th floor of this building. I just want to reiterate the city's support for this text amendment. We worked closely with council members to come up with this text amendment and the height that you see before you. Fundamentally, the city sees the island as part, as an extension to the city core. It should be noted that there are a few buildings on the west side of the river that exceed the 150-foot height limit, including the building that we're in. So when we talk about how the city form can happen, the taller buildings being on the west side of the river and radiating down to the east, this is exactly what this plan will continue to allow us to do. It also allows for developers to be flexible in how they develop their buildings, so they don't have to build all the way up to the 150. They can choose to gradate and differentiate height between different parts of one building or different buildings together to create a more interesting skyline. So together, those things are part of the reasons why we, with council, thought this was a good idea for this text change amendment. If you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Finally, I would like to say, before we have, in 2008, I made a very good lasagna. It was very good, and my church members loved it. In 2016, I added some new ingredients, really 2015, I added some new ingredients to it, and it became the top in the church. Just because I made some plans in 2008 didn't mean I had to get stuck with the same ingredients in 2008. If I find something better, then I can make some adjustments in 2016 to help more people love the flavor of my lasagna. So therefore, I would say in 2008, when we made this plan, and it was a good plan in 2008. But now, as we see developers coming up with some new ideas, I don't want to get stuck with the same ingredients from 2008. I want to have some new taste of my lasagna from 2016, and I encourage you to have some in that too. Thank you. I'm ready to answer my questions.
Are there any questions for petitioner or presenter at this time from council?
I just want to have clarity from our council attorney. You had mentioned when council member Davis asked for you to weigh in that the area plan had requested the text amendment?
No, no.
Okay, I want to make sure I heard that correctly.
No, this was, what the area plan did was review the original amendment that the council had supported and had submitted, and they did a... Excuse me, Aladeen, would you mind... And they did an insignificant change in the light of the meeting. And just, and simply get it in accordance with the way the zoning ordinance is laid out.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? If none, we'll move to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Jesse Davis, P.O. Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I've been to pretty much every meeting here that the council's held on this, and I supported this. At the beginning, I was kind of against it with the 12 stories. You know, people, as I've said before, for many years have said they wanted a grocery store back downtown, they wanted a pharmacy back downtown, and this is an opportunity for them to get that. You know, I'm not a big fan of tax abatements, but in the 2008 plan, I understand the city made agreements to invest some money in this area. That supposedly didn't happen, according to statements made in the past, so, you know, because of that, since then, they agreed to do that, and I guess it was for parking garages. And now the city's stepping up in certain forms to take care of that obligation as well. So I see this honestly as a win-win for the city and the people, and they have made some concessions to come down a few stories, so I hope you support this.
Do I have to sign in?
I think it is preferred that you sign in.
Okay. I'm signing in. Here we are again. I am very grateful...
And please state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Mary Bundy, President, Howard Park Neighborhood Association, 318 South Francis Street, South Bend, Indiana. I want to start with saying, there's been a lot of discussion. This has been going on since September. There's been a lot of public input, there's been a lot of written letters, there's been a lot of activity in the press, a lot of articles in the newspaper. So if someone doesn't know what's going on in Howard Park and they're not paying attention, it's been everywhere. With that said... Actually, I don't think I can speak too much louder. Is it the mic?
No, the mic's fine. Just speak directly into it.
Okay. So where am I sitting? So with all of the talk and publicity and dialogue and going in and out of conversations, thinking the project for the Commerce Center is dead and thinking it's maybe got some spark and it's coming back, with all of this, I have to say that the public is well aware of what is going on. And I'm really happy that with all of this dialogue, that we have not talked it to death. It's through the common sense of members of the council who have come together and realized the importance of this project and then coming up with this text amendment that would allow growth in the area. Since I moved here, there's only been three developments that's in five years. And I know everyone wants to talk about the 2008 plan, and I really liked Councilman Davis's analogy of food. The last time, I think it was about pizza. But, you know, it's nice to have a sense of humor. I loved the opening statements from the clergy about having a peaceful city, having a prosperous city, having a city where no one falls through the cracks. And I think that if we can continue to pass ordinances and laws and regulation that allow and encourage growth rather than squash it and talk it to death, I think the city is on the right path, and I'm very happy to be a citizen of South Bend. I hope the council will take into consideration their fellow council members' voice in bringing this amendment to a vote. I hope you will all stand together and pass this. Thank you very much.
My name is Samuel Brown, I'm in 222 East of Austin, City of South Bend, I have a workshop group, got 69 for better guys. From day one on this particular project, I looked at area planning and got all the information I could. And we had a lot of dialogue about this so far in the committee, in our community. I don't think no one would decide, see it's a bad project. But what the problem coming is the east bank, the west bank. And I don't really feel that's a leaving shot for this. I really don't. Because we had some long... I just feel like, if we're going to go with this, we need to okay this and get past this. You know, I mean, it's a good project, all it is is the height, the height. If it was a bad project, I could see you saying, let's stop this project. It's not about that, it's about height. I don't think that's a reason to shut this project down at all. So, I hope tonight, we'll put the two together once and for all, and let this project go through.
Seeing no one else in, oh, anyone else would like to speak in favor? And if you would like to speak in favor, please come behind the podium near Oliver Davis and form a line, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Do you want my work address, or do you want my home address?
You can state your name and address, please.
Okay. I am Ryan Snodgrass, I live in 4016 25th Street, basically Ironwood and Jefferson. I'm very much in support of this project. I think it's a really great idea to get a grocery store in the downtown area. There are a lot of cities around the country that would absolutely kill to have that kind of development going on in their downtown. What I want to bring up is, what if this is the catalyst for the major kind of development coming up in the town? It's the first big building to get built in who knows how many decades, and I think it's just a really good plan. Thank you.
I guess I'll write my name first.
And again, if anyone else would like to speak in favor, please line up close to Oliver, but if not, that's okay too.
I guess I'll start. My name is Charlene Ranstry, and I am actually a resident of Granger, Indiana. I live in 401 Woodnell Drive, Granger, Indiana, but I'm a resident of the South Bend Metropolitan Area in the suburbs. And I just thought I'd speak here today and just say that I know that it's been mentioned by Councilman Davis that I first moved up here back in 2009 from originally the Indianapolis area. I was actually from Fisher's, lived next to the Carmel area and the Geist area. I witnessed throughout my entire life there the tremendous amount of growth from Carmel, Fisher's, Indianapolis in general, with its renovations all over. And from that, saw some observations I thought would be pertinent in this situation, specifically because upon moving up here after college, I moved straight from college in Bloomington, Indiana, up here for my own personal interests, but I was told many times by a large number of people in the central Indiana area about how South Bend was a city in decline and that people like myself or young professionals should not move here. There was actually a huge amount of, I mean, I'm not sure how to express it, but very like negative attitudes toward this area. I was one of the only people who'd been chosen to move up here and took a huge risk by doing so. I personally had faith in this area, and I'm very glad to see how much it's become better. I feel like this place has actually recovered a great deal from the Great Recession. However, I would say that, I know that as much as there are concerns for the developments of buildings in terms of height that might obstruct scenery, it might change the landscape, it might cause differences in like a person's view depending on where they live in the city, I know that there are certain concerns there, but I would like to encourage that, from what I saw in developments in the Indianapolis area with Carmel, Geist, and Fisher's, especially Carmel, Indiana specifically, if anyone sees the history down there of what happened, those areas exploded in growth, and, I mean, Indianapolis spilled the 465 borders it had. And I do feel that, although I don't think we'll experience that up here in South Bend, which is probably a good thing, so that would be pretty intense, but I do feel that even though there's concerns over changing rules for building height, I feel like if South Bend is to grow as a metropolitan area, I think that's only inevitable, that eventually we will start to see larger buildings no matter what. And it's better to probably address that now and not be so concerned about stipulations of necessarily height as much as what are we going to attract by what we're building? For example, if we were to build hypothetically a casino, that's going to draw different crowds of the city than necessarily a grocery store, a pharmacy, and apartments. So, I do feel like the bigger concern and focus I would be more interested in as a, as a resident, and maybe others feel the same way, is that I would be more worried about what you attract to the area by continuing to grow, and not necessarily have to be like other areas, South Bend can be some kind of version of a city, but just to consider seeing in other examples how those worked out and see how that we might build a more than that, in a sense. Thank you.
Good evening, Byron Laramore, 402 East South Street, South Bend. My experience in working in cities from Chicago to Indianapolis to South Bend to St. Louis is that there's catalyst for growth, for economic development, and anything that can be done to encourage that growth and development as well as taking into consideration the needs of the local residents is a win-win. And I think in this instance, allowing for a little more room for development downtown that will meet various needs is a slam dunk. And I think it's something that really will benefit the city, will benefit the residents, and will help the city grow and capture some of the momentum we have now because economic development is very tangible, anywhere you go. And if you miss that opportunity, you may not get it back. So, I would encourage you to consider positive resolve on this in terms of raising that, that height, that ceiling type. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in favor, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? And again, if you'd like, you can line up behind Councilmember Davis, and if you want to move the clipboard back to the, uh, stand back there, and people can sign in while they're, while they're waiting.
I am S.J. Sable, with offices on Mishawak Avenue in South Bend. I'm going to forego my prepared text tonight and try to offer a little rebuttal to what we've been hearing here tonight. First thing I think is important to point out is that the current East Race neighborhood in its current configuration serves a vital function in the overall plan of the city in that it provides a beautiful transition zone between the downtown across the rivers and the residential that is on the east side. It's small in scale, it is very friendly toward people and apartments, and there's nothing about it that prevents Martins from building a supermarket there that isn't part of a monster block of apartments. This, this, this project is not the only thing that, that makes, validates Martins building a store there. The other thing is, you know, downtown, west of the river, is full of opportunities for development, places that are unnecessarily empty, buildings that are not unique enough to survive on their own merits. The opportunity is all over the place to build 150-foot buildings down there. You don't need to, to burn out the, this really nice transition zone to extend the downtown across the river. And in doing so, you must keep in mind that, that as a transition zone, this is probably the best place in town to experience the river on a personal scale from the west, uh, east side. And once you go with a 150-foot height limit, that experience will be lost because now the land will become so valuable, and I would point out, this is going to be a heck of a windfall for our Mr. Matthews, who bought his land at 60-foot limit price, and now he's going to be sitting on the Commerce Center in this site at 150 feet. He just made a lot of money doing nothing. So, this, this is deserving of preservation. This is an asset to the community as it stands. We don't need more downtown, we got more downtown now that we know what to do with, that we can get developed. We're not discouraging development, we're saying, put it where it's appropriate, and that's on the, on the west side of the river. This project is not appropriate in this area. It's entirely too large because Mr. Matthews is greedy, it's entirely too dense because Mr. Matthews is greedy, it is not designed with any discernible imagination or concern for the environment of the people that must live with it, and if it's, and it's just too much in that space. It's off-scale with that transitional neighborhood. And to use that single structure, that one project brought forth by a guy who won't take no for an answer, to change the entire character of, of the entire neighborhood is irresponsible, unresponsive to, to the whole concepts of, of city planning, and does not do this community any good. We need to keep things in their proper context. That is the whole point of city planning, is to establish where the contexts are for different kinds of development. This is not the context for a 150-foot height limit and a monster block of apartments that, that the residents can't afford, that will in turn drive existing residents out because they'll no longer be able to afford to live there because the value of the land will have gotten too high. And before you know it, the Commerce Center will be gone because it's more valuable as a 12-story building than it is as a really nice historic structure left over from the I&amp;M days.
30 seconds, sir.
I urge you to think beyond today, beyond the demands of the greedy Mr. Matthews, and consider the fabric of the city to be what you are in consideration of here today, not just this one spot, but the entire sense of the place, the quality of life is at stake here, and you're about to waste it.
My name is Steve Francis, 2025 Edison Road, South Bend, Indiana. First of all, I want to state unequivocally that I am not, I am for development and growth in South Bend by all accounts. Indeed, that's one of the reasons I became involved in the planning process nine years ago, that Oliver, Mr. Davis mentioned. It was an exciting process that involved hundreds and hundreds of community members led by an outside consultant that opened it up to some brainstorming on what a vibrant and viable human-scale place the East Bank could be. And we came out of that process, I think, with a united commitment behind a, behind a, a project and a plan that made sense at the time. That doesn't mean you can't change it, but let's be clear, this is not, at this point, about Mr. Matthews' project, and, and people have been testifying about the project. This hearing is about a change in the zoning coordinates for the island area, and I want to speak to that from two main points. One is process, and the other is some of the content of the proposed changes. In terms of the process, this looks nothing like an open participatory process that I know, I know many, some of you personally, and I know all of you are committed to open community-based processes when you make changes of this magnitude, and that hasn't happened. When you went, when, when the project, or when this went from a project-based zoning variance of some kind to changing the zoning ordinance, you reset the process, and we had less than a week from when the area plan commission voted a favorable recommendation to you. That's not adequate time. I happened to have, had the flu last week, I watched it, thanks to citizens who take these meetings from my bed, but, and I saw a plan commission that didn't vote initially to, to issue a favorable recommendation. They, they locked up, they did not vote initially. They had to revote and reconsider that vote, which I find rather probably acceptable, you know, illegal, but certainly not an acceptable process, that they voted first not to, or to have no recommendation or couldn't get a recommendation, to then change votes after a discussion to the eight necessary votes to have a favorable recommendation. And then today, your zoning committee could not issue a favorable recommendation because the public, although involved in the process about the zoning variance in this project, has not been involved about a much bigger issue, which is this change in the zoning ordinance to 150 feet, two and a half times the existing ordinance, which came from that area, from those planning meetings nine years ago. So, I'll conclude about that process later. On the content, what you're doing here, if you accept this and move forward, is to say to any, to any of the developers on that island, 150 feet, whichever, how many, however many stories that is, and it can be 12 stories again, is okay, you will have no ability to cut that back. This will open it up to the work site, which is undeveloped, other redevelopment sites that have been mentioned before, which can go to 150 feet, and you're granting that approval essentially tonight if you go ahead with this, because you won't have any case to be made for why any building along the river on that side can go to 150 feet. So, take very seriously, please, what this zoning ordinance will do in terms of the calculations of developers, rightfully so, I don't call anyone greedy, they're out to develop the land and to provide in that development a service to our community by upgrading the development of vacant land in this city. But, it's gone from 60 feet to 150 feet, rather, and, and the previous Cascades project was 78 feet, I believe, so that was not a significant increase, that could be a zoning variance of 18 feet beyond the existing ordinance, and so could this project, taking into account that the first floor is in fact a public use with a grocery store and a pharmacy. But no, you didn't go that way. You went the way of now changing the whole character of the island, subverting a process that was in place for, for eight years, which might be changed, and rather than, you know, go back to, to Councilman Davis's analogy or metaphor, it's not a lasagna anymore because you haven't just changed a few ingredients, you've made a whole new that dish with this zoning ordinance change. You'll probably call it a paella or something, but it's not a lasagna.
That's five minutes, sir.
It's not a lasagna, I can tell you that. I want to end with this, because now my...
Sir, your time is up.
End with a quote.
Sir, your time is up.
I just got interrupted.
Sir, everyone gets five minutes, your time is up, I apologize.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Mike, my name is Michael Licudis, I reside at 17583 Ironstone Drive. I'm a local architect, I also work for a local university, I represent myself, so, and a citizen of St. Joe County. And I've been part of the process, I've envisioned South Bend for the last 25 years, and I've seen it through many changes and transformations. And just to add something to the comments before, you know, I like lasagna, I like paella, but cities are not food. They are cities, and we live in them and we don't treat them like we treat food. I am in opposition to this tax, tax amendment, but primarily because of the project that it will allow, and I'll please indulge me in a, in a little bit of some viewpoint about why that's a problem. This design proposal as presented violates the aspirations for the quality of environment that City of South Bend has envisaged for the last 20-plus years. There have been no marketing or architectural feasibility statements, there are no absorption analyses that illustrate how 250 housing units to be introduced into the downtown economy can succeed. There is also no compelling architectural vision that could compensate for this lack of process and for the outside scale of the building. Downtown South Bend at this time does not need high-rise or sprawling building types. The building that is currently being considered is a throwback to the slab housing types of the 1960s, a building type that was discredited shortly thereafter, but not before its long-term consequences for American cities became apparent. The ill- perceived approach of making high-rise buildings, concentrating short-term economic vitality on single, on a single property, left many surrounding lots empty and downtowns of small cities like ours that seem to seem abandoned and without hope. This project could well follow in the same path. Since we have not been given any evidence of its potential for financial success or architectural merit, there is a distinct possibility that this may, rather than add to the costs of the city, and like the Chase Tower, end up costing the city millions in lost revenue and opportunity costs. Should the project be built, its egregiously large scale and lack of architectural merit can do, might do significant harm far into the future to the character around the East Race, which is arguably one of the city's greatest assets. The opportunity to create a real amenity for the city will be set back for decades to come. architectural merit, there is a distinct possibility that this may, rather than add to the costs of the city, and like the Chase Tower, end up costing the city millions in lost revenue and opportunity costs. Should the project be built, its egregiously large scale and lack of architectural merit can do, might do significant harm far into the future to the character around the East Race, which is arguably one of the city's greatest assets. The opportunity to create a real amenity for the city will be set back for decades to come. Should the project fail economically after it is built due to any number of factors, the blight on the downtown due to the enormous size and scale of the project will again result in a lost opportunity to improve life in the surrounding neighborhoods and potentially set back development in the immediate area. I enthusiastically support the idea of development. Development has to be common sense and incremental and appropriate to the times. This project needs a lot more architectural and financial study before it goes ahead. The developer has demonstrated a sensitivity to the character of the city in the past, but with smaller projects in a scale that resonates with South Bend's vision. So I'd like to urge you, the council, to work with the developer, the city, to work with the developer, to set high aspirations for this project, which has the potential, that whole development in the island has the potential to really transform, maybe a great success story, and, but back it up with compelling architectural and realistic economic vision that will continue the successful trajectory of the development of the past few years. Thank you very much.
March Kinsey, 719 West Washington for 6601. I feel like I should just say, amen, Michael Lacutis, you have hit all of the planning issues which are a problem with this development so far. Perhaps I could say something about the very inception, we keep, we keep being told that people, the community wants this, I'm not sure what community that is, anybody who's asked will say, well, we would love to have a pharmacy downtown, I love, live downtown, I would love to have a pharmacy. When OSCO's left, it really left a hole. But we have the finest grocery stores in the city, if one is willing to go around and go to them with a larger selection than any of our megamarts have in really specialty foods, so we have no problem with that. I am concerned, because I came to this town in 1970, and I told my husband, I hope we leave as soon as we can, they are making all the worst development decisions that anyone could imagine. And, well, our jobs were here, we stayed here, we began to fight to the city and try to fight for responsible development, the kind of thing that really is needed here. If you, so we didn't leave, we ended up here, but I have seen the Michigan Street Mall and everything else come and go because it was not thoroughly vetted and developed before it went ahead. We cannot afford that kind of thing, we cannot afford some of the blights that are over on the west side of the river right now. And if this building gets built, and I cannot see people being attracted to this massive barrier which will take up the ton across the island, and if it fails, we will have an even worse blight on the area. I have no problem with height, I have no problem with density, but I want design which makes an attractive environment, and not just building wall-to-wall on the plot that you've got, because you can build wall-to-wall on that plot. Think about what a resource the river is to this city, and how beautifully it flows through things. You come downhill from the west side and across to this lovely lower area, I think we could afford slightly more height over on the east bank, not on the island itself. The island has a very special character because it has got several of the most special buildings in town, which are large enough to really show off and be preserved. Why should they be put into shadows, actually, literally put into the shadow by this huge building awkwardly placed? I really feel that if one goes back to the drawing board, one can come up with something better than this. It's, the riverscape, I think, is what we really have to think about. The island is in no way attached to the west side, you have an enormous break there, you are going down, it's attached to the east side, and I think ought to be conscientiously developed with that kind of thought.
Thirty seconds, ma'am. Thirty seconds.
Was that?
Thirty seconds.
I can't really hear very well.
You have thirty, you have thirty seconds.
So I will cease at this and say, listen to Michael Lacutis, he knows his business.
I'm Rolanda Hughes. My address is 1029 Riverside Drive in South Bend, I live within a mile of the site and walk along the river frequently. I do feel that despite the best intentions of our three council members who have proposed this text change to our zoning ordinance, the public really is put in a difficult position because we are both evaluating a project that has been proposed, which admittedly is your primary purpose for this, but we're also letting loose something completely other. As Mr. Francis was pointing out, this is more than the project, it is licensed to build at 150 feet, 175 feet, with mechanicals on the whole of the island. What that would mean, and again, I revert to speaking about the particular project at hand, but it would mean this for the whole of the island, for the project at hand, it's 150 feet right along the street, along La Salle and along the East Race, for an entire block, a building that is as high as the AT&T Tower, taller than the AT&T Tower, taller than the Patient Tower at Memorial High School, all right there along the street, which I agree with Ms. Kinsey, is too high for the island, the character of the island is, by tradition, I only, less than a decade ago, through a planning process, a smaller, lower area. So not only would we have potentially that 150-foot-high building, but throughout the entirety of the island, we would in a sense have a wall of 150-degree buildings blocking one side of the river essentially from the other. I want to mention a couple of things. At the Board of Zoning Appeals, at the Board of Zoning Appeals, where the appeal was denied, the petitioner for the project was asked, the petitioner's team was asked, why do you need to go so high? And essentially, the response was, we need to go so high in order to justify a parking garage large enough to meet our parking needs. So I did a little research, they provided numbers that night, 240 parking spots were needed for the Commerce Center. I've counted several times at the Commerce Center, which is fully rented at this point, and the highest number I've come up with is 99 spots used at the Commerce Center. They said they needed 120 for Martins, I've counted at two Martins, one had 95 in the lot, and that's a comparable services sort of building to the one that's envisioned, and the other one, these are the two Martins closest, the other one had 83, and that included the parking for six additional businesses there. So 120 seems high. Further, the offices that are envisioned in the building are said to require about 132 slots, and the apartments 144. The offices slots will be used during the day by and large, and the apartments will be used at night, so there could be some savings there. By sharpening one's pencil, one could easily save 100 to perhaps 180 spots, which would allow for a smaller parking garage, which, according to the case that was being made at the Board of Zoning Appeals, would mean that the building could come down several stories. Nothing higher than 60 feet is currently built on the island. There's one variance that Mr. Matthews holds for the corner of Niles and Jefferson, that was to have been built several years ago but hasn't come to fruition. He's the only one who has a variance as high as 96 feet. Mr. Perry has one up to 78 feet, as I understand it, but that also hasn't been built yet. My point is, the highest thing on the island right now is 60 feet, several of those buildings by Mr. Matthews himself. Low to mid-rise is the direction that people are desiring in the new urbanism that our community is theoretically espousing.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
So one final thing, if in fact this ordinance were to come into play at 150 feet, would the city take back the $5 million that it has granted in the presumed compromise early in the year? I'd like to see that money retained by the city if in fact height variance or a text change to 150 feet is granted. I'd like to see that, that $5 million in tip money back in our pocket.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
If anyone else would like to speak in opposition, please line up next to Councilmember Davis.
All right. Hi, can you hear me? My name is Karen Schefmeyer, I'm at 300 South St. Louis Boulevard in South Bend. I am the Secretary of the Howard Park East Bank Neighborhood Association. People may say, well, what's the difference between the Howard Park East Bank Neighborhood Association and Mary Bundy's, the Howard Park Group? We have been around for quite a while, we are a combination of businesses and residents, and we are also advocates for the neighborhood, we are pro-business, we are about responsibility, we ask for accountability from public servants. And what I just want to say today, and I'm not going to take too long, we are so hungry for business over there, we're so hungry for development, we want to have families in there, so we really want it, we want it so bad we can taste it. The plan is a little high for 150 feet on the island. It's not a little high, it's really high, okay? I know that you guys are not, you haven't come to our neighborhood meetings, we've been around a long time, we were here for the summer and the city festival, so I'm going to give you just a little bit of history, which will be good for you guys to help make your decisions, okay? First of all, I want to tell you that with the Howard Park East Bank, you can't separate them, they are Siamese twins, okay? And they're not just joined at the hip, they're joined the entire body. So whatever you do in the Howard Park area is going to affect the East Bank and vice versa, okay? So whatever decisions you make, they got to be together. Some people want to divide it right down Jefferson, don't let that one happen. This area, the Howard Park East Bank, is a transitional area. It is, I think, the future of South Bend. There's some open land there, there's going to be good things coming, the past eight years have been really difficult to do business in. I got to tell you, it's been hard, and it hasn't just been hard there in Howard Park East Bank. We are developers too, just like Mr. Matthews. We have shopping centers, and it has been hard because people don't want to leave space. They're afraid. They've been afraid for eight years, but things are changing, you can tell it, and good things are on, on board here. Let's get to the height, okay? Here's something you need to know. This weekend, I spent the entire weekend going through our files, the Howard Park East Bank stuff, and when we were planning and talking about how we, how we envision this area, we talked about the height, it was one of the most important things, because we wanted to keep a village. And in our notes and in our minutes, we talked that it should not be anything like South Bend, downtown South Bend, okay? It should not be that. It should not be Grape Road, it should be the village. It should be where everybody wants to come. And one of the most important things, and I haven't heard anybody talk about this, and I know I got clergy in the room, and you didn't bring lasagna, that? Okay. One of the most important things we ever talked about was the height, and the height needed to be in proportion, and it should not be taller than church steeples, okay? And I think that's where the 60 feet came in, because the height of a medium steeple is from the roof up, I think it's like 40 to 52 feet from a medium steeple, so you consider the height of a church roof line, and then you add that to it. And so that was the goal. It was never to have 150 feet, oh my gosh, especially along the river, you're going to screw up the views. So the people who are on this side over here, oh my gosh. So that's the whole mindset there, why we wanted to have it in proportion. I don't know. I heard this was a done deal, I have a friend who's a reporter called me and said, I hear it's a done deal, and he says, it kind of feels that way. But I'm going to go and speak, tell them what I know, because I've been here a while, and I just ask you to make a really wise decision here, and don't do it in a hurry, okay? Because it's, I don't think it's a 100-year decision, I think it's more than 100-year, because if you put the wrong thing in, it's going to be really bad. So that's my thoughts. Thank you so much for letting me speak, and have a great night.
Sorry if you folks seen me before, I don't believe Ms. White knows me, Dwayne Bennet over in Ferguson. I don't have so much to say, but I just more question, how many acres is in that island?
Sir, just so you know, during public comment, we do not respond to questions, but we can respond to questions during the rebuttal period.
Well, here's what I, I'm trying to figure out, you folks want to put a 150-foot apartment on that island. You've got a fast-moving St. Joe River on one side, and you've got a faster-moving on the other side. What kind of care are you going to give against erosion, and in 10 years having that apartment complex sitting in the river? Has anyone taken that into consideration? Because with that fast current, and here the last couple of years, the St. Joe River has been busting its tail down through there and ripping everything up. You go down the river, you're seeing trees getting washed in every, every day you can go down and find a new one. Now, that, that island's made of earth, it's made of some stone, but is it made with enough to say in 10 years not wash out? When it washes out, that building's coming down, and the people that are in it may be in it when it does come down. So that would be something I'd ask you folks to think about when you're doing it. And unless that island is more than five or 10 acres, that ground up there on the island gets wet from heavy rain, it's going to turn to mush. When it turns to mush, what do you got? You've got a disaster waiting to happen.
Hi, I'm Michaeline Metternau-Ski at 308 Parkobash Avenue, South Bend. I really thought I was going to be the last one, so I was going to say amen to what Mr. Francis and Mr. Lacutis, because they brought up all the concerns that I had, and just really want to urge you to, to slow down with a little patience and some creativity, I think, this, well, first of all, the, I'm in opposition to amending the zoning just because of the process being so fast and not getting the input, as Mr. Francis said, and that's the, speaking to this thing today, but also with larger projects, just that I am for that type of development, but just not at that scale, and referring to what Mr. Lacutis had to say, I'm in agreement with all those things he said. So I'm encouraging you to slow down.
Liam McLaughlin of 1120 Georgiana Street. Close your eyes, picture Paris, the Ildala City, it's the island in the river, there are not mega buildings on either side of it, there are buildings that make sense. They did the church thing, keep the normal building heights below the size of the churches. That's the way the city is, it's one of the most beautiful cities in the world, and you don't think of massive buildings next to its riverfront. You put a lot of money or investment in the riverfront, 150-foot buildings make sense.
Seeing no one else in opposition, the public portion is closed, there is a five-minute rebuttal. Councilmember Davis, would you like me to lead with a quick minute? Councilmember Davis, would you like me to lead with a quick minute of comments? And then I'll turn it over to you.
So just want to make a couple of comments to a couple of points that were made. First, regarding transition, I completely agree on having an appropriate transition from our downtown into our residential neighborhoods on the west side of the city. Actually, we have a pretty steep, seems like we go from a hundred-and-fifty feet to forty feet directly, which doesn't seem like a great transition. But again, what we have is a hundred-and-fifty feet is the current ordinance, but we have many buildings that are much taller than a hundred-and-fifty feet on our west bank. You also have to think that the west bank is higher than the island, just in terms of its general elevation. So working, again, like a pyramid, working down towards the residential area, I think it's completely reasonable to have a building as tall as the Chase Tower. Move that down to a hundred-and-fifty feet for the island. Move it down to sixty feet for the remainder of the East Bank CBD, and then move it down into residential. I think that's a reasonable transition. And then finally, you know, someone raised, you know, who are, who is this in response to? Again, the community at large, the number of emails we've received and the number of positive comments we've received over the past six months, and especially from neighbors living in this neighborhood, neighbors who live nearby within this neighborhood, at least from my perspective, the emails I've received, the phone calls I've received from people that live in this neighborhood have overwhelmingly been in support. So those are my comments in rebuttal, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Councilman Furley. Tonight in our room, we have Mr. Pat McMahon. He used to be our director of Project Future. Every time I see him, I just have to just pause for a second because I remember when he came to the council to talk about ignition park and innovative park. I was totally skeptical that anything was ever going to happen in ignition park. I thought they were going to have all of this things as he was looking down the future, and it was going to be a total just wipeout, and we weren't going to have anything. When I drive home every night, I sit over there and I look at ignition park, and I say, wow, I came within seconds and not really wanted to sponsor that. He saw the future when I didn't see it. And I'm thankful that he saw the future down the road. We didn't get stuck in the past. You know, in two thousand and eight, we believed in outside consulting. An outside consultant, we believed in. But when we have people like Rob Bartos, who lives there, he lives there, he invests into this community. He's with all of us, went to school here. And Martin's wouldn't have gotten over there, and would not be a part of this, just they didn't believe. It's not Walmart. This is not Kmart. This is our local business. The local business person coming together with another local business person, Dave Matthews. Take legislation and beat up a particular developer, it's not good. Mr. Perry's going to be coming to us, and a few others are going to be coming to us with over a hundred feet coming up soon. Just glad to clear up all that in one shot. And so then for us to be thinking that he's going to be the only one, it's not good for that. And we need to make plans. Development is something to dream. We have to look at what our plans are and respect tradition. But at the same time, we have to make sure that we move forward. And text amendments, Councilwoman Broden herself brought a text amendment to the council, and we all voted on it in August, this past August. And it was about housing. Tell me about housing. We changed the whole housing for the CBD. We could have got stuck in the past and said, no, the housing needs to be there. It's been there in the past. We don't want any changes, you know? But no, she let out, and us using the text amendment, we came to this exact same process. We could have stepped back and talked about all the potential problems and issues that we could, and had a scary campaign going on, or what's this going to do? When we change this text amendment, the city of South Bend is going to crash, going to fall down, it's going to burn up. All the young people are going to go crazy in Notre Dame, they're going to have all these problems. We're going to have sin and everything else, really. We didn't do that. We sponsored her text amendment, we came to area plan, I championed it, and we moved forward.
Thirty seconds, Al.
So therefore, here we are tonight. Hopefully, you will be able to see the new seasonings that we have. As a son of a mother who's a chef, and a grandfather who's a chef, that's why I use examples like that. Because you got to cater to your audience to make sure you have your recipes always updated. Thank you.
With that, we'll go to comments from council members. We will, mind if we start, or do you want to start down here, Regina? I know we start with that.
Start.
We'll start with Councilmember Preston, work our way down the line for anyone who wants to make comments.
I think Auburn had a really good point in terms of, you know, we kind of get on one side, and we get all fiery, and oh, this is going to happen, this is going to happen. That's actually how I feel like, you know, it's happened on both sides in that way. And inasmuch as, you know, just as many emails that I get, I think about this issue, I've gotten equal on both sides. You know, there's lots of passions on both sides. There's lots of people in favor of this kind of thing, lots of people against. I think that it's important that I remember, and people have said tonight, that this is about, this is not about the commerce development, it's not about one project. This is about a larger issue, about changing the height for the entire area that's been proposed. And I think that makes it harder for me to vote for because the concern that I had back when it came to us as, okay, if we do this for one person, then we may have other petitioners come in, and then we have, you know, this onslaught, and we're voting, 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 and changing height, and how can we deny? Now, by saying, okay, we're just going to let everybody do it, that, to me, is even harder to say yes to. And I think because we have all of this interest from the public, and it's hard to separate the two, admittedly, because we all know that this has, in my mind, at least the time issue, how we're rushing through it, is really about making sure that we get five million dollars of regional city money that's going to help put forward this commerce development project. I mean, I think I feel the need to just say that, like, because I think if that were off the table, if that were not an issue, we could take more time, the time that I think is needed, to work these issues out and kind of parse those things out. Because there's other things that's coming on board. I think that we can absolutely get a grocery store and a pharmacy in the downtown area without selling our salt. And that's what I feel like, we're putting a lot of money and a lot of energy, and we're really trying to push this through, when I think that process, we need to focus on process, not propaganda, on both sides. And I think since we kind of have this fiery, you know, kind of feelings on this side and on that side, that's when we most need to focus on process. And it's been asked, that we've been talking about going back and doing a more thorough process for months. I think it was almost maybe at least a year ago even, that the Area Plan Commission suggested, when we were talking about another issue with the commerce development, that we go through that process to actually change the neighborhood plan. And had we done that then, we wouldn't maybe be sitting here now. And so I feel like, again, process is really important. And if we get back to process, then we have a fair and equal opportunity to find out what really, what do the neighborhood, the people in the neighborhood want. In two thousand and eight, we went through that process, so we have an assurance that that's what the people who were there wanted at the time. Now we've got emails on this side, emails on that side, people coming, and so I don't feel like it's, I'm able to really judge, like, what's the true desire of the folks in that area? That's what those processes are about. And I really feel strongly, and I think I said this in the past as we looked at this issue, that we really need to look back at the process and take our time and do it that way. And we could have done it, I don't know that we have time now in doing that anymore, but we could have done it, you know, months ago. And we've just not gone that route. So taking that time, I think, I've heard from other council members, it could save us millions of dollars. And I think that's worth it, especially as we start talking about, you know, the financial situation as such. So I don't think anyone, as has been said, is opposed to development, is opposed to progress. I think what we have to do is figure out exactly what is progress. You know, is this the right thing for our community? Does it make sense? And so I would like for us to think about the possibility of maybe an amendment to this text amendment. And then maybe I could support it.
Councilmember Kelly?
I don't have much to add to things that I've said in the past, just in general, about the Matthews project with regard to this text amendment. Unlike Ms. Williams Preston, I think it actually, I like this in that it levels the playing field in that area, so that everybody is working under the same set criteria. I have a great deal of respect for Mr. Lakoudis and his work, and I certainly brought up some valid points. At the same time, from this perspective, you know, the two thousand and eight was the East Bank plan. One of the first lines in the East Bank plan is that because there's been no development in this area for the past ten decades, we feel the need to do this plan. So now we're talking about twenty years, where very little has been done. While this is big and different for that area, a nine-story building doesn't strike me personally as a monolith, nine stories. And it brings us, just from a pragmatic standpoint, the grocery store that people have been talking about wanting in this area for twenty-some years. So to that end, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Councilmember Broden?
Sure. Boy, a lot to hit here. I guess I am equally happy that at last, after nine, well, gosh, clear, almost seven, eight months, we are finally talking about height for an area rather than a single project. It allows us some distance between an individual project and the broader question, the best height for this area. And this discussion, it's difficult because we've effectively truncated it because we haven't been talking about this for months. We haven't been talking about this effectively for years. And we certainly haven't been working on it for years either, as a city, as a community, and as a district. We all reference the East Bank Village Plan, or the Comprehensive Plan. Spirit of due diligence, all right? Know your comprehensive plan. Two thousand and four, sixty feet. East Bank Village, lots of folks hit it this time about how invested, how the right stakeholders were at that. And they looked at it from all angles. Developers, neighbors, opposing neighborhood groups, community investment, people looking at it from an economic, you know, what's going to be the best way to spur development, all right? What's the reasonable thing to make people feel good in their neighborhood when they walk the streets? What is going to be most inviting to businesses? How is it going to distinguish itself from the west side of the river? We didn't want more of the west side of the river. Good urban planning says, do something different. Make people move from one area to another. Give opportunities for people to invest from one area to another, all right? That's good urban planning. It's progressive, it's thoughtful, and it's based on input. Not just from people who want to have an opinion. It's not just academic. I mean, it's got to work. It's got to drive dollars. It's got to drive investment, and it should guide how we spend our money for infrastructure or how we tee up a given product, or project, I'm sorry, or projects. So East Bank Village Plan, very comprehensive, sixty thousand dollars, three-month process, suretts, active, every, lots of folks had a voice. And then it not only stayed in that neighborhood and was an academic activity, it came to us as a council, or to you as a council. Do you like the vision? Do you support the vision? And you said you did in two thousand and eight, all right? And I, there's been a lot of, it's outdated, it's irrelevant. Folks, it's not outdated, and it's not irrelevant. It's anything but that. And I'm going to hit this at a number of different angles. You can't say nothing has happened in the East Bank Village, all right? I'm going to debunk that. We all walked through there. I live pretty close to there, and I am charged with representing this area. And what I see, and what I know, is that it is anything but dead. We are on, and we are in the middle of redevelopment. And that's coming off of some really tough economic times that would do everything to cut and choke off that development. We all know that, right? But yet, development has happened. Hold on with me, because I'm going to line up what those projects are. So we had an economic pressures. We also had, at the same time, as a community, we have made alternative decisions about where we invest our dollars. And specifically in the East Bank, Eddie Street One, all right? Infrastructure, bonding, all of those are decisions that we made as a community. And when you make a decision in this area, it affects this area. When we make a decision on the East Bank area, it is going to affect the West Bank area. Because that's how cities work. They affect each other. You cannot take out, how many acres, Mr., who's the gentleman who came to the podium? Somebody on this council should know how many acres on this island if we are going to change this island. Basic fact, we also should know that the island itself is susceptible, it's in between two bodies of water. We should know that in 2014, there were problems with going and digging down into the ground. Obstructions that make it impossible. So when you talk about one-fifty leveling the field, we're not leveling, there's some impossibilities there to level the field. And if you try to overcome those impossibilities or those barriers to dig in and go in deep so you can go high, you are going to increase your cost of construction exponentially. And if the developer can't do it, the ticket is going to hit us as citizens of the South All right? I want to share, this is knowing your district and knowing your place. So let's talk about some of the investments. We're alive and well in the fourth, and in East Bank. The sites, park expansion, our whole streetscape projects. Look at Jefferson. Mary Bundy, where are you? The roadways in front of your house, and the sewer pipes that go underneath your house in your district, or on your street and your neighbor's street. We are in the third phase of that infrastructure investment in that neighborhood. After you do infrastructure, guess what else follows in good urban planning? Development. We're teeing things up for things to jump in, projects to jump in. The construction of townhomes, of the apartments, the facade improvements on Jefferson, all of those are different life and activity that's happening in the East Bank. And I don't have the ticket prices for these. We all serve on this council. We all know what these cost and the price that we've been putting into this. Smart streets, the park bond, the propagand dollars and that investment, all right? All of these things, whether they're happening or whether they're soon to come online, they're because of a vision, and they're because of a plan. because of a vision, and they're because of a plan. So, it's not dead. Our redevelopment commission says it's not dead. In 2013, adopting a text amendment to the South Bend Central Development Area Plan. You know what's talked about in this? Signed by our mayor, members of the redevelopment commission. Protect this unique asset. Don't build buildings up to the water's edge. We have water's edge on both sides here. These are goals for my district, and for this neighborhood, and for the people that I am charged to represent. So we can't turn our back, or we can't just simply dismiss the 2008 plan and say it's dead, because as recent as 2013, we reaffirmed the same visions that are in this plan. This, the East Bank, it's been growing in investment interest since the reopening of the East Race Waterway in '84, following the completion of a comprehensive plan process that led to the establishment of the East Bank Village Master Plan. Upscale residential units have been completed in the form of the East Bank and the River Race Townhomes. That is recent development. I encourage, I'm not going to go over this tonight, but there are specific plans, not only for the East Bank, that validate what happened in 2008, and said, "That's not an old tire-worn-out plan." It said, "It's good. Keep rocking and rolling with that plan. Stay true to course." So, I encourage you, fellow council members, if you haven't looked at these things that drive the very development decisions in my district and yours. Monroe Park is listed in here. The west side of the river is listed in here. Goals and direction and priorities. And I'm telling you, 150, you say things that weren't ever imagined before, you know, things that we've never thought of. None of that, 150 doesn't encompass the unthought of. The question that I am so eager to talk about is high-rise versus low-to-mid-rise. And there's a real easy distinction in construction and architecture, and it's at 75 feet. 75 feet. You know why? It's because it gets more expensive once you go higher than that. So when we talk about 60 feet in the East Bank Village Plan, really, it has a bump-up built into it, and it has a factor that compresses stuff, and it's the construction cost. So, where I want to go with that is, same, again, visions, process, things that have been incorporated and validated and voted on by commission and our boards, and they've been the tools that have guided development. Practically speaking, we ask our boards and commissions, and we have a very public, so aside from process of coming up with a plan, we also ask our boards and commissions to keep revisiting those plans, and to say, "Do they fit? Does a particular project fit?" We all know the four different things that we need to look at. Our boards and commissions, some of them look at five, five criteria. For the record, I would like to enter in the St. Joe County Planning Official Training document that many of us went and sat on, and learned, about these really important decisions, and the things that really should prompt significant changes to our tax ordinances. When we want to make a plan a change, it's because people, developers, are coming to us repeatedly, and they're saying, "I want X, I want X," and another one comes, "I want X," and another one comes, "I want X." Okay? There is a case, there's a fact trail, there's a history of people asking the same thing. There's not a fact trail here, there's not a history. There's three developments, three projects, maybe four, four projects that have even asked to go beyond the 60. And I guess I would like to ask, where's the data? Where's the information that supports this change? And absent that, why would we ignore plan? Why would we ignore subsequent decisions by previous administrations, by previous development commissions, by previous planners for the city of South Bend? Why would we ignore that if we don't have all, you know, this question being asked again and again? So, where I want to go with this as well is that the very, the very impetus for all of this discussion this year, no, 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 let me don't, I don't want to jump that fast. Design Guidelines, 2013, again, another document that asserts, signed, vetted, lots of hard work went into it, thoughtful process, what should our urban architecture look like, whether it's on the west side of the river, east side of the river? Design Guidelines, review committees behind that. When we talk about 150 feet on this island, we're still contemplating something that's starkly different from the scale, the design, the aesthetic quality of any of the surrounding neighborhood. And that is completely opposite of what we have said we wanted as a vision. Now, visions change, right? They change. Different things influencing them. But, as a city, one of the very things, and one of the very responsibilities I think we all share, is that we need to make sure that change happens in a way that involves the public, that's cognizant of what developers want, that's cognizant of what can be financed, and what is financial, what actually will grow, you know, bring individuals downtown and actually contribute to our tax base, right? So there's economic, it's not just about height, right? It's not about width, it's about growing our city and keeping it vibrant. In 2014, sorry about the whole historical lesson, but there's a lot at stake here. 2014, we had an op, we had, you know, I call it kicking at, kicking at the 60, the 60 height limit. We have looked at this, you have all looked at this before, whether it was the Wharf site, whether it was the Niles and Jefferson project just off the island, even within this, the most recent project that we've been contemplating. We looked at height, and we asked ourselves as a community, "Height. What works? What could you live with? What will work for us as a city overall? What will be specific? What will help that district?" And I'll tell you what, in June of 2014, another planning commission, okay? I'm sorry, area plan commission, no wait, first BZA route, then the planning commission, and then to us as a council, right? Particular project came forward, and guess what? We found a way to get that project to work, and we made a policy. Agency comments, Department of Community Investment. The Department of Community Investment will support, for a five-year period, starting in 2014, height variances in the East Bank Central Business District for up to eight stories or 96 feet. However, in order to gain the city's support, the project must provide for the following: a public amenity and pedestrian-scale facade treatments for the first two stories as written commitments. Okay? So we have an active policy on the books, publicly announced, and that people have made investment decisions upon for this area. Case in point, the Wharf, or the Point, oh my gosh, the Point Apartments, purchased in 2015 for $13 million, invested since then $3 million, just within the last 10 months. So while we're talking about changes, people are making investments already in the East Bank, and they're basing it on what we do, and what we say, and the allowances that we give. So our plans aren't dead, we have found ways to work with developers, we have found ways to welcome people to the East Bank. So, and I would contend that the very impetus for all of this discussion, the regional cities' dollars. Marvelous opportunity, amazing opportunity. What a shot in the arm for us as a city. What a shot in the arm for us as a region. But, do you know the projects for South Bend? Every single one of these projects to South Bend talk about our enhancement of the river, and how we can feed off that river, and how it's unique, it is a draw, it's a pull. You go to Chicago, and you go on the little architectural boat tours down the river, they're crying because they have given up their space along the river to high-rises, and they don't have public access. They have overshadowing. They don't have sunshine in areas. Other communities are making smart decisions about their river, and about what's adjacent to the river, and they're thoughtful about it. And it's based on good urban planning, what works and what doesn't work. And we have had some of the most renowned individuals in the world before us, talking about smart planning and smart decisions as a community. And I just urge all of us not to turn our backs on the planners, and frankly, not to let just this evening's event where we're talking about something bigger than a project be short-circuited or truncated. Our community deserves more. My district deserves more, and the people all over South Bend deserve more. So the very heart of what we're doing with the Blue Waves, which by the way, the river rework and the park rework, that is all, all, all. And Howard Park, it is all. The old transpo site, it is all based on East Bank Plan and the uniqueness of this area and its proximity to the water. Mishawaka can do it, why can't we? The South Bend Tribune ran an article in the paper. Four-story Millet Ironworks Plaza would have about 230 luxury apartments, plus 15,000 square feet of retail and restaurant space on the first floor. There would be parking for 133 vehicles, and it's public parking. So, if Mishawaka can do it, how come we can't figure it out? I'm sorry for, I'm sure this sounds like a lecture, and it is. No one has been in the heart of this, and in the middle of this, deeper than I. So I get it, retired, I get it, it sounds like it's the same old, same old. I get it that we think there's been a lot of public debate on this, and, you know, let's not mistake information, though, for facts, and good decisions, and good urban planning. Let me be real practical here. To the amendment itself, the text amendment, change. Effectively, it puts us back up to 175 feet. We had a 5-4 vote against that not too long ago. And I would contend that we asked people to come back, you know, or we said we would consider reasonable changes to the East Bank Plan. Ask yourself, is two-and-a-half times, almost three times, when you, oh gosh, three times, when you go up to 175, is that reasonable? Ask yourself in your own heart, wrap your own mind around it, is that reasonable? I share the concerns of the developers, the urban planners, the architects. Absent it being put in the public record, I would like to submit a, I would like to submit an actual, they're my minutes, but I haven't gotten anything else yet, but I will submit it by the end of the night, the reports from the very consultant that we hired in about November, late November, early December, who said, "It can be done. You can get mixed-use development here that is sustainable, that is sustainable at 96 feet." Other communities are doing it, it's not just Mishawaka. Just north of the State House in Indianapolis, you've got a beautiful market, beautiful market plus parking surrounded by residential units. So it can be done. Unfortunately, there's nothing, I shouldn't say nothing, that's a little, I'll get attacked for that. Very little has been entered into the public record to substantiate the need for this additional height. For the island at 150, for the island at 125, for the island at 96. What is the data? We got smart streets, I want smart development, and it better be, I want it driven by data and by people who are petitioning for this, and coming again and again before us. And I'm sorry, that hasn't been the case. I think we're missing an opportunity here with this text amendment. We're failing to really address the transition to the east in the Central Business District. You know, one side of the street, potentially 150-foot buildings, the other side of the street, 60. I think we're also missing an opportunity, and I'd like the... I think we're also missing an opportunity, and I'd like the, um, for us to consider, we've stipulated, or we've included stories on the West Bank, and we heard tonight that, in our earlier meeting, that that's been a problem because there's so much variation. We all can do the math on this, right? If it's a 150-story building and eight-foot stor, you know, eight, 150, I'm sorry, 150 feet that we're going to allow, okay? If it's 10, 10 feet, eight, eight feet ceilings, all right? Then, then we are talking about not a nine-story building, we're talking about the potential of 15-story buildings there. Okay? If you mess with the height and you want 10-foot ceilings, you effectively, you know, you're looking, we're not looking at nine-story buildings here. And again, those are contrary to what is in the plan. I talked about the uniqueness of, of this area. And I'll have to comment, because I know this has been a lot of by quality and, and feel and, but this is also an econ, you know, an economic decision too. I mean, this is something that is going to affect, I, let me say this. Part of our rationale for making this change had better be economic. It had better be a tax advantage to us, it had better answer, it hit some of those notes for us as a city. You know, people talk about catalyst, potential, you know, it could have the adverse effect. And I think that Professor Lakoudis hit that note. We don't want to put all of our eggs in this basket going up. I think reasonably we should spread that development around and those opportunities around for people to invest. I think what we do in this area in terms of height necessarily will affect the West Bank and some of the momentum that's going on there in terms of residential. We talked a little bit earlier about the housing study. And while it was said, "We're not there," uh, let me remind you, just the other night, the mayor said, "We're going to be there next year." So is it sustainable? Questions about feasibility, questions about the mix of the apartments, getting it right. All of that information shouldn't just be somebody's gut feeling that we're hitting the right notes on this. And we shouldn't be trusting all of that and putting on, in this type of resources just relying on things like, I think, I hear, I need. With, this should be firm. We should have more information. We're in near, so my last, I guess my last point is, the plans, the plans are there and the plans have grown as we, as a community have changed. And I, I just hope that we are not going to alter these plans, one, on a very short timeframe. Okay? We did text amendments. We've done two, three text amendments in, in my brief tenure here at the council. And on average, this is, we've been looking at this, well, really, the public has only been looking at it for 11 days. The 150 height for an island, not just one project, that was a different story. A shared housing amendment, that was a four-month process and included a vote by the Zoning and Analysis Committee to initiate it. And then it went before the Area Plan Commission as well. My own text amendment, or my two text amendments that affected the Notre, you know, the University of Notre Dame and then opened wide some more opportunities for development in the East Bank area to make it easier for people to, you know, live together and congregate together. That was also a three-month process. So if we're going to make a change to a text amendment, let's look at our history. Let's look at how we initiated it. Let's look that we voted on that very specific language and we argued it. And we debated it. It went to the Area Plan Commission, it got the light of day. And the fortunate thing is when, is that there was more time. And the fortunate thing here is there can be more time on this text amendment without endangering any other goals. So I'm going to be suggesting some, um, changes. I want to make sure if this goes forward, that, um, we are incorporating specifically in this amendment, design standards, that we are referencing back to the redevelopment plans. Okay? It, it can't be carte blanche, it can't be, we have got to hold, regardless of the height that we decide on tonight, or hopefully if we think about this longer and, and actually, I would recommend that we table it. But, but some of these very specific nuts and bolts things need, and I think, I would like to recommend that we incorporate, um, the design standards, the, um, I think I just, I just mentioned them, so that, so that'll be in the record. And then, um, just so it's not missed in all of this, is elimination of the story language, or the stories, you know, in parentheses on all, all these districts. And then, um, changing the, um, let me start, I'm sorry, that was on the west side. So I'll, I'll just let that conclude my remarks for now. But thank you for listening, I, I know it was long.
Councilmember Burner?
So I'll just offer some thoughts and some history very briefly.
Mike?
Okay. In, uh, in the 20 years I've been on the council, 21 years, seems like we've got a plan for everything. And I, somewhere in this building, it's probably on computers now, you can find a plan for every neighborhood, for every residential area, for every business area. And after running into circumstances like this, over the years, whenever we adopt plans, I always preface my remarks by saying, I find them to be interesting, informative, educational. Like so many other things, they are a product of the moment and dynamics and things can change within weeks, months, several years. They don't render it inadequate or don't render it totally out of, out of use. But I think you have to take those opportunities when they come to you, which a taller building would be, and view it as an opportunity, not as something, an obstruction process or a process by which someone's trying to sneak something or do something. I think it represents an opportunity and perhaps some viability that the city hasn't seen in, in my lifetime. I remember when Studebaker closed. Uh, I remember, I remember the downtown mall. I remember, uh, the problems we had on at Brackthorne with regards to the golf course. We have been fighting kind of an uphill battle for the last 30 or 40 years. I believe with the opportunity to do something like this, we've reached any threshold that South Bend here 2-4 hasn't seen in the last 50 years. And that's an opportunity for a significant downtown project. The height doesn't concern me because I know that the river sits, proposed 150 feet. Because the river sits on, on this, in this particular area, sits 30, 40, 50 feet below the West Bank. So something that looks like it's 150 feet on the east side, from the west side appears to be 100 or 110 feet. With regards to the comments on how beautiful Paris is, I've been there. I've also been to London, took the Ferris wheel around the Thames, and I have to say, I much prefer the skyline of, of London than I do the skyline of Paris, which is certainly beautiful if you see it that way, but beauty is often in the eyes of the beholder. A large building isn't necessarily an attractive building. A, uh, large building in an area such as this is proposed, which has been lacking in development for a number of years, I think, and fit. Not an expert in that, so I have to rely on a lot of advice and a lot of opportunity, a lot of information that we receive to us. 150-foot height limit doesn't preclude someone from offering to build something at 50, 60, 70, 80, or 90 feet, but it gives people the opportunity to dream, which they here 2-4 have been limited to 40 or 50 feet. I think what we need in this town are more people that are doing some dreaming, then perhaps believe it's absolutely important to create a process that delays and I think it, it confuses and it makes it difficult, these opportunities which come before us. That's not to say that, again, going back to the plan, that's not to say that plans aren't interesting, but I think that when an opportunity presents itself, we have to be willing to attempt to work with it that, in, in mind. I think process, progress is as important as process. We've got in place plenty of processes. One of them is an opportunity to make a text amendment, which we have before us tonight. I've been very much supportive of this idea from day one. I think it presents an opportunity for the city that here 2-4 we haven't seen for a long time. I'm, I'm prepared to support the text amendment. I think I said before that if the biggest problem South Bend has is deciding where to put the next 150-foot building, we will have made a lot of progress compared to where we were a few years ago.
Would like to take a time to just thank everyone for your patience and thank you for your comments. Really appreciate it. Would also just like to remind everyone, any development agreements reached within this island, those development agreements are still in place regarding the standards. And then finally, I just want to make it known that I, I support 100% the vision of the East Bank plan. It's not all about height. There's a lot in that document outside of just the height limit. It calls for mixed use, it calls for restaurants, it calls for retail, it calls for grocery, it calls for pharmacy, it calls for increased density. That's what the plan is all about. So for me, this is a, this is an easy decision to support the plan, support the vision of the East Bank neighborhood and look forward to having some great amenities and some great development in that area.
On the, in the outset, when this was first kind of laid before us, it seemed as though it was a pretty easy decision to support, but in my case, in my case, the more you find out, the more you think about the importance of what we're doing and the importance of getting it right. This is a transformative thing that's happening over here. Development is going to happen. It's going to happen on the east race and it's going to happen soon. Properties are changing hands over there, developers are proposing things to community investment that, that we ought to all be excited about. If you look at Notre Dame's development, just to the near, near north of that, the River Walkways, the east, the Blue Waves Project, which will be unveiled, uh, when the third, at Century Center, that I encourage everyone to attend, um, they all fit within, within a vision, a flexible vision, not a rigid plan, but something that, something that you want to give pause and make sure you're doing right when you, when you have that opportunity. I think, I think that, um, and I think I have a record for supporting economic development, three terms on the city council and three terms as assessor. Uh, I put, I put my record out there for anybody to, to challenge in terms of whether or not I'm, I'm open to change and open to making accommodations and open to making a, a special, special considerations for economic development. When Studebakers closed and other industries left in the early 60s, uh, South Bend was in sort of a state of shock, I think. We'd gone from a 70% manufacturing, 30% service to what was rapidly becoming 30% manufacturing, 70% service. And people like Pat McMahon and other, other community leaders, one of whom we, we just lost here, Fred Crowe, put together a group of people, and I think they called themselves the Community Economic Develop Planning Something, uh, but after they went through their planning process, they came up with Project Future. And Project Future was supposed to be a way to guide development and to encourage, well, South Bend flailed around for a while and tried to identify who they were, were we going to be, should we try to be a manufacturing center? Should we try to be a technology center? Should we try to be a, uh, a wholesale, uh, distribution area? Actually, we're all of those things. So a lot of good things came in the last 20 years. And it seems like, it seems like it's happened so slowly, but if you look back, it's only 20, 30 years that all these good things have happened. And we all, as citizens of this city and as elected representatives, want to keep that momentum going. So I think that's part of the impetus for trying to, trying to not say no or not say, "Hey, maybe there's another way to this plan." It's been a longstanding desire for people on the east side of the river to want a supermarket and a pharmacy. Saying no to 150 feet or on the island isn't going to cripple that vision. Things are going to happen over there anyway. The question is, do we believe that the east side of the river should be unique and different and mixed use? Regional cities did. They're willing to commit $4.9 million to a guy who says, "Hey, I want to do some mixed-use development." The city, the city comes along and says, "Gee, we want this so badly, we'll throw another $5 million into the pot." We'll not only do that, because state law changed in 2013 or 2015, whenever it was, that allowed us to give 100% tax abatement instead of the traditional 50%, we'll do that. So this is not only not going to generate taxes, tax dollars for, if it takes two years to build, we're at least looking at a dozen years before we get tax dollar one from whatever, if we enter into that kind of, that kind of financing agreement. And I know that's not really on the table right now, but it ought to be because the most important job we have as city councilmen is to be responsible fiscal stewards of the, of the resources, the financial resources available to us. And to put this package together and give it to a developer just because we want to keep momentum going and just because he's going to bring a supermarket and a pharmacy, which everybody wants here, and it's going to, and a 600 and some, uh, space garage, it's not the best way to go. You've got city, nationally reputable, highly esteemed city planning companies who have weighed in on this, who have said, "Guys, don't do this, this isn't the way to go." They said, "No way to go." And, uh, we've got, we've got learned folks like Professor Lakoudis who said, "Tis, this violates so many tenets of city planning." We've got violations to the process of changing a vision. We haven't gone through the vetting process that established the East Bank development area or, or East Bank Village area in the first place. We've just said, "Oh, let's, gosh, we don't want to, we don't want to cripple this, we don't want something not to happen." But I But I think it's irresponsible, it's an irresponsible fiscal package to begin with. If you just compare it to what I, I know it's probably more complicated than this, but if you just compare it to what I read in the paper Sunday that's happening in Mishawaka, they're doing tax incremental finance contribution, but they're doing it in the form of the tax incremental finance bond, and the money from that bond will replenish the tax incremental finance fund, which we ought to cherish for all kinds of things that we never even dreamed we could use tax incremental financing for before. Everything that comes up now, we want to say, oh, we've got TIF funds for it, we've got TIF funds for it. TIF is not, is not a bottomless pit of money that we're always going to have, and especially if we give five million dollars away and not get any kind of return on it for over a dozen years, then I think, I think that's wrong. So I am for hopefully delaying this. I wish I could delay it more than, more than, if I thought there was support to actually take a look and listen to the learned people who have weighed in on this, I would ask for a larger, a longer delay than, than one meeting. But I think if there's any sentiment at all for delay, it's probably only for one meeting, so I intend to make a motion that this vote be continued. I would like to see it in the public portion, but if there's not support for it in the public portion, I would like to see it in the council portion. And another meeting between now and March thirteenth, under the auspices of community investment, to bring one more, the people who I don't think have been adequately heard, those developers, those planners, those people who, who can actually see a new vision, to bring them. And if you decide afterwards that, yeah, well, let's go ahead with a monolithic one hundred and seventy-five-foot-tall structure, if you think that's best, that's fine. But I think, I think that that kind of building, that kind of mass compromises the Blue Waves Project, it compromises the beauty of the St. Joe River, and it compromises everything that's been envisioned in one fashion or another on the East Race for the last twenty years. By God, I was there when I voted for the last park bond before the one that was passed last year that provided money to excavate the East Race. And that, whatever it was, I forget, three or five million dollar investment there opened up an East Race that was supposed to spur development on the east side of the river, again, in small shops and businesses and restaurants and all things like that. Because it didn't happen overnight, the city got nervous and allowed things like AM General to come in and a couple of other low-rise buildings. And that's fine, there's nothing wrong with AM General, except that it wasn't the way it was supposed to be. If there would have been a little more patience or a little more creativity, we would have got what we wanted in the first place, which was a lot of places like the Emporium, which was probably the only one that was part of that vision at the time. We can still have a unique, diverse, vibrant East Race that doesn't include high-rises if we just think about what we're doing and there's no reason to distinguish the, the island from the rest of the East Race. That's a convenient separation to justify a hundred and fifty feet there. If you look at the whole East Bank Village Area, it's low to mid-rise, and there's plenty of opportunity for that to happen. If you look at the transpo site nearby, that is now about to take off in residential development, there was a proposal for a high-rise there, reject it, because it's out of character with the rest of the Near East Side. There was, you can't say that there's not development going on there now, there was just a recently completed four-story apartment building across from St. Joe Grade School there on the northeast corner of Colfax and Hill Street, that is evidence that there's a vibrancy there. That's the kind of thing we ought to be promoting, and that's the kind of thing that I think is going to happen. There are already several other projects in the works that may well be compromised by, by a monolithic high-rise. In my opinion, there's probably, if you respect what was a well-vetted plan on the east side and you think that there's some integrity to all of that, and there's an integrity to the planning process, then I think you'll, at the very least, as a council here, agree to one more meeting, one more meeting. If it doesn't change your mind, we haven't stepped in the way of development or not. But I can't blame Dave Matthews for asking for the world, you know, he's got, he's got approaching twenty million dollars of public money thrown at this project. Well, shoot, I'd go with it too. He's got a parking garage that is not only accommodate what he wants to build, but accommodate everything else that he owns in, in the area. Is that good? I don't know. Let's talk about it for a while. We have one chance to get this right. We did smart streets, I agree with Councilmember Broden, we ought to do smart development, and this is not smart development in my opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
I would say that we should not be stuck by the past, we can move forward. Our records are not only what we have done in the past, it's what we are doing now. We don't look to Mishawaka for all of our decisions, a lot of our decisions. There's many decisions last year that my esteemed colleagues that are still going on in Mishawaka that have been banned in South Bend. And so they did not use Mishawaka as their key decision-making to do that. My dear esteemed colleagues, I'm sorry what, I don't know what happened, but we had a long meeting in January, eight of us were at the council meeting. And so we had long meetings then. I don't see any reason why we need to continue when those of us could be there. We had meetings in the afternoon, meetings in evening, and so now to ask for meetings when we cannot be there is, I respect Tim Scott, he said, I can't be here then, but move forward. To sit back and to share that the text amendments that Councilwoman Broden, that we just had four months to discuss that, she may have worked on it for four months, but we did not have public discussion for four months. In the zoning, I chaired that myself, and that was not a discussion we discussed for four months. And it was not something that we, in fact, I championed when it came to area plan. I did not sit in the area plan to try to defend or defeat that. And so I think that we have to all remember that no matter, even on Monosix District, we are all charged with representing the entire city. We get voted by certain sections and not large, get voted by the entire city, but we don't, I just don't make decisions for the sixth district. This whole body makes decisions for the sixth district, whether you're voted by the exact people or whether you're not, we all are here on this council. And so therefore, when we look at the two thousand and eight plan in closing, the plan also included the fact that we were going to help whoever the developer was. We didn't know Dave Matthews was going to be that developer, we didn't know Frank Perry was going to be a part, we didn't know who it was going to be. So the fact that the plan, the plan that said we were going to help, Dave Matthews has been the one that did that. The fact that he got regional cities' monies, there is a time limit on that. But have we rushed and have not done our due diligence? I would, of all the things, I've been on the zoning for five years, been on this council for ten, this is my tenth year, and we have spoke from September all the way through tonight. To say that we've only discussed this for eleven days is alternative facts being used. And so therefore, we cannot afford that happening up here. And we have had, that's a total of four, six months, it is time for us to move forward. We've asked people to come to make compromise, we had meetings to make compromise, we did that. And to say that other places denied it, well, a lot of those folk were not from South Bend. It's amazing to be on area plan when they need something from New Carlisle, they need something from the county, they massage all their things so they can have development. But we do something to South Bend, we send them through rough times. To want to be a developer in South Bend right now, we are really sending a message that it's going to be some tough stuff. Go to Mishawaka, go to the county, we'll work with you. Come to South Bend, we give you the tenth degree, you may not want to come here. That's not good for South Bend. That may be good from when y'all did it back in the past, y'all, but that's not the way we need to move forward in today's world. Today's world, we need to be able to be firmly toward them, not get stuck in the past, but move forward. Tonight, I encourage us not to keep pushing down the can and pushing down thinking anything new, so we can play with the public, play with everybody else and say something new is coming. We should have been here last month, we need to move forward.
There's something about being the last person to speak. A lot of my comments and perceptions have been shared. Clearly, as you can tell, this is a very important issue. There are councilmembers who feel very passionately in regards to not only the planning process of vision, but also in terms of the tax amendment that is before us. There's been a lot of discussion in regards to Dave Matthews and that this tax amendment is a response to that particular development. Part of it is true, I was not the sponsors of the tax amendment, but I, what I believe that it has to be much further than that, as we begin to look at the development, not only for this particular area, but for the city at large, no one would debate the support for economic development, but there's always a but. No one would debate the need to have a grocery store or pharmacy, but there's a but. When we talk about the vision, there's a but. When we talk about plans, there's a but. As councilmembers, we have the responsibility to look at it from a very holistic and from a perception in terms of what would be good for the city. As an at-large member, I do respect Councilmember Broden, her position. She's a representative for the fourth districts, for a district, she has individuals that would like to move forward, those who would not, would like to move forward. She has articulated her position very graciously, passionately, and I respect that as well. But as a council, I would like to ask those individuals who would like to have one more meeting, what would change? Would the outcome be different? As we've gone through this process, we've had other individuals who are waiting to take care of business. I'm not saying that this is not important, it is, but the question that I would ask, would the outcome be different? And that's something you need to ask yourself, I'm not asking for a response. I don't think anyone is saying throw the vision away, throw the plans away. What we're saying is that as we begin to move forward, we have to be flexible and we have to be mindful in terms of our decisions. And so again, as we move forward, again, a lot of time has been spent from September, we've had a number of meetings. I received emails from both sides, just here lately, and they're not the Dave Matthews quote supporters. These are individuals throughout the city, but also throughout the fourth district. And so as we move forward, I would hope that the council will get behind the tax amendment if it's passed, and that we can move forward and to begin to work more collaboratively as we look at the development that will be forthcoming for the city of South Bend.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that Bill eight seventeen be continued till March thirteenth.
Second. I hear a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Roll call please. Roll call, sure.
For continuance, Councilmember Preston? For continuance?
Yes.
Aye. Councilmember Kelly?
Nay.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnum?
Nay.
Vice President Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Boardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlet?
Nay.
Councilmember White?
Nay.
Motion is defeated.
I'd like to make a motion to that we have. I just saw, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we accept substitute version of Bill zero eight seventeen.
And send it forward.
Send it forward with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Questions?
We have a motion in a second. Is there a question regarding the motion?
Yes. Are there no considerations of changes or inclusions, are?
It's got to be a question regarding the motion, not considerations.
Okay.
That's okay. So we have a motion in a second for a favorable recommendation, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Nay.
Councilmember Barnum?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Boardy?
Nay.
Councilmember Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Nay.
Five to three, move forward with favorable.
Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to write and resolve from the committee in the hall.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
So councilor, back in session, to the fourth, follow we, seven, third reading for Bill number zero two seventeen.
Third readings on an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance and seeking a special exception for the property located at a ten-acre tract located along Eddie Street and the west side of Jordiana Street between Napoleon and Howard, Councilmanic District Number Four, and the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Move for the passage of Bill zero two dash seventeen.
Second. Is there, sorry.
With, with the, subject to and, subject to and condition upon the written commitment that the portion of the real estate okayed abutting toward the Anna Street should be developed for the new four residential two-story open spaces.
I still make the motion based on the limits of the issue.
Second.
Okay. So, Carla, could you please give us a roll call, roll?
Zero two seventeen, Councilmember Broden?
Uh, aye.
Councilmember Barnum?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Vice President Davis?
I'll have back the mine to the last.
Yeah, I can, because I'm chair. Is that one to know?
Um, Councilmember Boardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Now, Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, can you have a reading, second, three seventeen was, no, no, zero eight seventeen then?
Zero eight seventeen.
Substitute.
Substitute, zero eight seventeen, third reading on an ordinance initiated by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter twenty-one, article three, section twenty-one dash zero-three of the South Bend Municipal Code by adding a new subpart twenty-one dash zero-three dash zero B four C to increase the maximum building height permitted in the CBD district located between the St. Joseph River and the East Race Waterway.
Motion for passage of substitute eight seventeen. Second.
Okay. Thank you. We now have the roll call, the three by last.
Uh, Councilmember Barnum?
Aye.
Councilmember Boardy?
Nay.
Councilmember Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Nay.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Two to six.
Does she vote for? Does she?
Two to six.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
You, you voted aye?
Aye. Oh, shouldn't be nay.
So it'd be two to six.
Nay, I'm sorry.
You want the nay?
Yeah, okay.
Three to six.
Thank you.
I know.
Sorry, I'm a little.
Okay. Can we move to it to our resolution, please? Resolution zero seven seventeen.
Resolution seventeen dash zero seven, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a special rate agreement with I and Tech LP and I and Tech Code LP to pursue to the city code section seventeen dash twenty-nine.
Just do we have a committee report?
Yes.
Let's do it. This is utilities. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was community. Yeah. We had a utilities committee at a public hearing this afternoon on Bill seventeen on Sunday that comes to consult with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Reider. Do you have a presenter? Please state your name and address and give us a very brief synopsis of your issue. Thank you. See you later.
Dick Nussbaum, I'm a practicing attorney here in South Bend. My home address is two twenty-five South Sunnyside, here in South Bend, and my office address is two ten South Michigan, Georgetown, South. South Michigan, Georgetown, South Bend. First of all, I want to compliment the council on it. Very interesting and spirited and very civil debate. I think a lot of bodies could learn from what I heard this evening. But I do have to say that two council members have put me in a very, very difficult position, and you are one of them, Councilmember Davis, and Councilmember Boardy is the other, in the sense that you have praised the vision of Pat McMahon. Because I'm going to have to be with you 100 percent. He's going to be part of this presentation at this moment. I think we have a very unique circumstance this evening in regard to this special rate agreement that we are presenting. We have the, we have the ability of hindsight of about 30 years of a project that a number of people have a lot to do with, and Pat certainly a lot, and John Boardy, you were another one that was around back then. I was around there back then too. I'm not going to take any credit for it because Pat kept me out of the way so that I wouldn't screw it up. But what I want to start out with on our presentation are two, two individuals who have some statistics and some information to provide you to show how successful this IONTECH-IONCO project is and has been over the past 30 years. And we have the president of the United States Steelworkers who represents many of the workers out of that plant, and I would just like to have him come up and tell you about the workforce there and the success that that workforce has in making this project a success. So, I'd like to come forward.
Good evening. Good evening, John Chegley, 10446, North 650 East in New Carville, Indiana. As you said, I'm the president of the local union out there. I've been out there since 1990, so I was there from the beginning. I started working out at IONTECH when the IONCO project was in construction. So I've had a unique viewpoint of watching this project go from ground zero to where it is today. Just want to talk a little about the competitive nature of the steel industry and why I'm here today. I have the great privilege of representing my fellow workers out there for 15 of my 27 years, so I've been doing this for quite some time. First time I was elected, I was 30 years old, so I didn't really know what I was doing. Today, I think I'm a little more versed in some of the things happening out there today. And one of the things I think I focus on as a local president is you have to look long term, you can't focus on the near term. And I've bargained five contracts. Like I said, there's 435 members, a vast majority of those live here in South Bend, as well as other areas, but I've negotiated five contracts. I got to tell you, the sick, real nature of this, of this industry is really becoming much different than it was when I first started in the industry. As we all know, if you know steel at all, you know that there's ebbs and flows, highs and lows in the industry. Those highs become, are becoming shorter and those lows are becoming longer. We are in probably one of the longest lulls we've had in the industry in quite some time. We go back a little bit in time to 1999, when the industry itself was really with closures and steelworkers losing their jobs. Throughout all that, the IONTECH-IONCO ventures kind of weathered all these storms. We began to have a very serious, a bunch of issues in the industry, as we all know, in 2009. We were the only plant that I'm aware of that didn't see mass layoffs and shutdowns during that course of time. Since 2009, we've been trying to dig ourselves out of the hole as a steel industry. So we are still, we're finally getting to the point now where we're getting close to getting out of this hole. We were in Pittsburgh negotiating contracts that started in 2015 and lasted a little over a year before actually got a tentative agreement. Myself and my fellow presidents around Pittsburgh bargained for, on behalf of our workers and our members with our cementing. And recognizing the need for some, some major changes, we entered those negotiations with reasonableness and fairness to try to make sure that as an industry and as a company, we were able to weather the next storm, not the one we're currently, but the next storm. So as we bargained for 10 months out in Pittsburgh, tried to find some unique ways to preserve the good, good wages and benefits our members had, we had to make some tough choices. The tough choices came in the form of some, some different ways to look at healthcare, our pension plans. We looked at unique ways to provide some opportunity for some income while the success of the company was also out there. So we, we came back after 10 months and a lot of people considered this a concessionary contract. I didn't look at that, at that way. I looked at it as an opportunity for us to look long-term, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years out. Like you said, I'm, I'm a 27-year employee out there. My members are now getting close to retirement. The guys that I hired in with are getting close to retirement. These are good-paying jobs. These are jobs that are good for the community. We have pensions, we have good healthcare. And while we were bargaining, I guess I want to touch on one thing, while we were bargaining for a contract, we also had members from our union and from the company, were down in Washington DC trying to, trying to fight unfair, unfair dumping of steel. So while we had a lot of pressure domestically, what was really putting us in a bad, bad spot was the enormous weight of imports that came into the, in the market in the last couple of years. We went to Washington, myself included, and testified in front of the International Trade Commission to try to withstand some of these unfair dumping of steel. So we, we were successful getting a lot of, of the competition or a lot of the outside influences to reel back some of their imports for five years. So we're now looking in a position where we can kind of maybe dig ourselves out of the hole and get back to the top of our game, but we need your help. With the proposal in front of you today, it puts us back in a little even, even playing field. We need as much help as we can to preserve these, these good-paying jobs. This industry is tough, it's a very fragile situation. I think, I believe since IONCO was built, I think the number of new facilities in the United States is up to 40 new gas lines and lines. Our line is now 30 years old. It's been very successful. We're talking about six-figure jobs, a time of good healthcare, a time of good pensions, and we need your help to support this amendment or this proposal so we can keep those jobs here in St. Joe County and we can keep those good-paying jobs around to the community. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir.
In addition to the employees benefiting from IONTECH-IONCO, there are a number of South Bend businesses, too hard in fact, that are vendors out there, and one of them, one of the largest is here, just to say a few words this evening, and I'll ask Tony Maloney to come forward from Coons Wagner.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I wish to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Tony Maloney. I'm the vice president, general manager of Coons Wagner Construction Services. I'm a graduate electrical engineer from the University of Notre Dame, also a registered professional engineer in the state of Indiana. I'm the governor of the Northern Indiana chapter of the National Electrical Contractors Association, representing about 41 contractors across Northern Indiana, and I'm also a member of the Academy of Electrical Contractors. I'm also one of the owners of Coons Wagner Construction Services, and I'm currently serving in my 41st year at Coons Wagner. I'm a second generation at Coons Wagner Electric. I live in Mishawaka, my address is 528 Webster in Mishawaka, but our business is at 3801 Ford Drive. We're in one of those visionary locations, the industrial park in South Bend. Our facility was built in 1970. We've been added on to in 1974, '81, '99, and 2000, and I was around for all of them. We currently employ approximately 150 people, with the majority of those being South Bend residents. Our growth has been tied to our fierce commitment to providing our customers with quality work at a fair price. We pride ourselves on the long-term relationships that we forged over the years, and one of these relationships is one with IONTECH and IONCO. We were one of the major subcontractors for both facilities when they were built during the '88-'90 time period, and during this construction period, we employed at a peak of 350 electricians working two shifts. At that time, it was one of the largest projects that we had undertaken. It also provided us with an opportunity to develop another close-knit relationship with an outstanding organization. Today, we can say that we've been successful in our efforts. Since those early days of construction, Coons Wagner has performed ongoing maintenance and capital improvements to the IONTECH-IONCO facilities, which have amounted to more than $25 million in electrical business. Over the last 27 years, our employees have become part of the ION family. They've participated in their golf leagues, bowling leagues, company picnics and the like. We often hold meetings together where we critique each other's processes and find ways in which we both can better, be better and more efficient in all that we do. So when Mr. Kai asked me to speak tonight and asked that you vote in favor of this agreement, I felt a duty to do so. A healthy IONTECH-IONCO are very, are very important to all of us. We're all a smart part of the overall operation of the facility, but we do understand that a healthy and vibrant business is good for our business as well as for our employees. We currently perform about a million to a million and a half dollars worth of preventive maintenance and capital improvement services annually, which employs as few as six, but as many as 25 people, depending on the maintenance period when the work is being performed. The agreement reached between the Board of Public Works and IONTECH-IONCO will help the company control their utility costs and keep them competitive in the markets that they serve. As with every linked economy, the success of one company helps the success of multiple companies. We are one of those downstream companies whose success is dependent on the health of the top of the pyramid. Therefore, I urge the council to approve the amendment as presented, or the agreement, I should say, as presented to you between the South Bend Board of Public Works and IONTECH-IONCO. Thank you for your time and attention.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
And now to get to kind of the guts of the reason why we believe that this agreement is within the ordinance and it should be approved. We talked a lot about the capital improvement of the trunk lines, the sewer lines, and Pat McMahon would like to talk to you a little bit about that and what happened 30 years ago.
Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you. Members of the council, my name is Patrick McMahon. I live at 1805 Bader Avenue in the city of South Bend for over 45 years, and I am a full-fledged current payment, or payer of my utility bills and subscriber to the water plant and the wastewater plant. So from that, and I have a small history of, of working with the community and with the city and the county and the town in conjunction with this project, and I wanted to share a few perspectives with you on this issue. I consider it to be an extremely important issue and appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight. I'd like to talk about it from two perspectives. One, from the perspective of developing property outside of the city when the city supports those projects, and number two, from the standpoint of, of costs related to providing them service. As many of you know, I was involved with an economic development program called Project Future that started in the east, and I can tell you during the first number of years, we had an easy job of bringing businesses into the community, primarily because an awful lot of our activity was centered around the industrial parks. And there were businesses that were looking to expand at that particular point in time. In the Midwest, local businesses who were looking at expanding needed to move away from confined spots they were in town and were looking, should we stay here or not? And we found we had a pretty good time with it because the industrial parks provided land that was already zoned, already served by utilities, and all somebody had to do was walk up and, and sign them the signature to purchase in a way they hadn't went with the project. It was, was a very, very good program. While that was going on, though, we did realize one thing. This was a great, great place if you had a three-acre or a five-acre or sometimes a big one would be 10-acre project, but it couldn't do more than that. And at that time in the 1980s, there were a number of major projects that were starting to happen in the Midwest. None of them were auto-related, some of them steel-related, Toyota was in play, a number of communities were taking advantage of this, and we couldn't respond as a community to those types of inquiries because we couldn't meet the criteria that was out there. So we put together a, a committee of, I think, some pretty good folks. Dick Johnson, who ran Area Plant Commission for years, Bob Richardson, who was the county engineer for quite some time, John Lozinski, who was city engineer in this, at that time in South Bend, representatives of AEP and of NIPSCO, and we scoured all of St. Joseph County and we looked for places inside South Bend, inside Mishawaka, inside the county that we could accommodate large projects. And we found very, very few places that that could be done, and we ended up focusing on an area out near, about three miles at that time, this side of New Carlyle, on the west side of South Bend, which was between Smilax and Walnut, 20 and US 2. Because it met the basic criteria that we, that, that, that we were seeking, it had good soils, it had access to good water, it had two roads, major highways available to it, it had a trunk line rail line with Conrail being one of the largest in the country, and South Shore having major connection into Chicago as well. And it was, it had, from a water standpoint, the ability to serve any project that came out there, so we built a water plant, and New Carlyle was very interested in offering a municipal umbrella for that to operate in, which was very good. And South Bend had the capacity to provide some sewer service, and that provision of sewer service was, was very, very big. It actually had shut down the development of some other projects in that area years earlier. So we had a great plan, and those were some very good folks. They were in their jobs for a while, they understood what it took to move things forward, but we needed a big project and all of a sudden, Inland Steel shows up, they're announced that they're looking for a site, and, and we made a pitch to them about this being a great opportunity. And it only became real because they showed up with a project that had a huge amount of capital investment. It was half a billion dollars, it was $500 million promising 250 jobs with IONTECH, and it provided enough of a base for us to use tax incremental financing to address, address the public cost. Early days of tax incremental financing hadn't been around for all that long. We were, we were extremely pleased, pleased to say that we could put together a pitch to inland, and they bought it, and they built the plant. As you all well know, things are moving very well. We're extremely pleased. Then they announced, very, before the project ever finished, construction on tech, that IONCO was an option that they were looking to move forward on. It would double the size of the plant, it would double the employment, and who could not be excited about that? There were people lined up for jobs, there were vendors lined up for contracts in order to do work with them. It was a super thing. But we had one big problem. As well as it was all planned, the sewer line that the city ran out there, which came from the airport, had a limited capacity. And we knew it could handle IONTECH, and it could handle some other development in the park, but to double the size of IONTECH was a whole other deal. And so we were stymied. The Area Plant Commission, working with the county and city of South Bend, went and hired co-associates at time, this was pre-DLZ, to do a study of the neighborhood, and they came back and they said, if you build a trunk line, you could take it all the way from the treatment plant on Riverside Drive, run out Cleveland, cross over, take it out 20, and serve the site. Not only could you serve that site, but you could also serve the entire Blackthorn area and the rest of the industrial park area that was on that west side of town that was in a capacity problem. Because the area was growing faster than what previous folks thought it would, the sewers going down Cleveland Road weren't going to handle the full development in Blackthorn, and the city was considering doing a major investment out that way. All of a sudden, there's a plan to do a trunk sewer that runs right through the neighborhood that the city can use for everything that it had in that quadrant of the industrial park and any other plans that the city had to move that direction. The sewer was also designed to handle that entire part of the watershed of St. Joseph County. So if you took a look out Western Avenue and then everything to LaPorte County and to the north side of St. Joseph County, the sewer was designed in order to handle all of that flow. Who paid for it? It all came out of a second tip issue that went forward because of IONCO. So Inland Steel and the bond steel during, as they moved this project forward, addressed the cost of the entire infrastructure improvement that brought probably the first trunk sewer out in South Bend's history in maybe 40 or 50 years, out to an area that otherwise would not be served for future development, whether it be an extension of the city of South Bend or whether it be a part of the county. And, and, and not one single taxpayer, I, as a ratepayer that supported the waterworks and wastewater, particularly the wastewater side of the bill, never had to pay as a city resident one penny for the extension of that trunk line sewer, not even for the section that goes through the city of South Bend and serves the industrial park Blackthorn and the near neighborhoods that are expanding in that particular area, not the development that Holliday has extended on that side of the road and so forth. As a ratepayer and as an organization, not one penny went toward building out that infrastructure. And I think it's a very important point for you to consider as you take a look at, at this particular, this particular resolution. You know from other testimony, and I understand you had a discussion of it a little bit earlier, that not one drop of their, of their water, not one drop of the effluent that comes from IONTECH and IONCO is storm-related, and it does not contribute to the storm water problem in South Bend nor the separation problem that the city is, is looking at. Number two, you also probably heard, and certainly very true, that there's, waste is very dilute. It has not carried the biological loading that most of the waste does from the city, which is most, as you know, most of the cost of operating the treatment plant is to reduce that biological load before it puts it out. This is industrial flow that is relatively clean and has a very low operating burden on the water plant relative to what the normal flow would be if this was serving a large number of residents and, and was residential flow. And I, I speak with some knowledge of, of that activity, having had some responsibilities there years ago. ago. In addition, I would like to say this. I think, having been, having worked for the city, having worked in the engineering department, having worked in redevelopment, and having worked with the city in development projects, I can certainly understand why the city from time to time would like to adopt policies where there's a surcharge for projects that choose to go out in the county rather than be in the city, when there's a city alternative. I can certainly, I certainly understand that. But I don't think there's a place for this when the site or the operation couldn't be in the city, even if we all wanted it to and those developers were. We do not have 400-acre sites that are served by major rail lines and that have the kind of traffic that a plant such as IONTEC and IONCO has in the city. And quite frankly, I'm not sure you'd want it right next to neighborhoods. You don't want it next to schools, you don't want it next to restaurants. And so it's really a perfect opportunity for the community to see large jobs and large employment, large investments to come in that otherwise would never be in our community because you can't do it within the city limits. You have to have a location such as this for it to go forward. So I'd like to actually commend the council for having opportunities to address this issue such as this resolution, because when the steelworkers go to work, I don't think they care which side of the city line they're on. It's important those jobs are there, it's important to feed their families and build their homes. You have created a great opportunity, and I commend you for it, to giving yourselves an opportunity to make certain that you don't stop majors' development from happening for reasons that wouldn't be fair to any of us in the community, wouldn't be fair to the council. When there's certainly, when there's a project that couldn't be built in the city, no matter how much anyone wanted, there needs to be a way to address it so that it can be treated like any other industry and not put up a barrier to those types of growth, new opportunities or investments. So thank you very much for giving me an opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to wrap up the formal presentation here in just a second. Mr. Tom Kyer is here. He has yielded all his time to me, and I will be very quick here. When we went to the Board of Public Works to approve this, to ask for them to approve this agreement so we could bring it to you, it was a beautiful day on Valentine's Day. You might remember, there were a cloud in the sky, and we looked out that 13th floor, and Tom mentioned to me, there's our plant. And as you looked out that hearing room, you could actually see, just like you could reach out, that IONTEC-IONCO plant. And I thought, what a symbol there. Even though it's not in the city of South Bend, it's so close to us, and I think you've heard from Pat and Tony and Todd, the importance of how we work together to make this all happen. And this, I spoke to you this afternoon about really kind of the technical reasons why this agreement makes sense and also meets the requirements of the ordinance. I didn't want to repeat myself on that this evening. I thought it would be important for you to understand how important it was for us to work together in order to have this resolution approved. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. before you sit down? Any questions for Attorney Nussbaum? Thank you. Now we would like to open this up to the public. Those who would like to speak in favor, please come forth. Please state your name and address and share your thoughts.
My name is Penny Pavcinski. I live in the 2900 Rock, Ferguson. I'm starting out here because I'm not sure what else to do at this point. I've tried everything. I'm really worried about the high-speed traffic in my area.
Excuse me, ma'am. We are addressing this issue here.
So privilege of the floor will be after, there will be an opportunity to speak to the council at privilege of the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
No problem. This has been a long meeting normally, this is the time that you have privilege of the floor. So I do understand. Those who would like to speak in favor of this particular bill, please come forth. Those who would like to speak in opposition, please come forth. Seeing that public hearing is closed, back to the council. You have one question.
The, Mr. Nussbaum, maybe you'll choose your addresses. As I'm sure you know, as I'm sure the folks from IONTEC, you mentioned stormwater is not an issue with regards to them sending stormwater to the city, it's simply effluent from the plant. But going forward, and I guess this is a 10-year contract, if this is such a financial, potentially such a financial burden at this point in time, I would ask you to look at, with the folks from IONTEC and IONCO, look real deeply into the future because we have some extraordinary proposals, some extraordinary rate increases coming as a result of the consent decree, and I don't want anybody to be terribly surprised about this. So I'm going to make the assumption that this is a critical issue at this point in time, going forward, we will be dealing with perhaps somewhere so. I think upfront, everybody should understand that.
We certainly understand that is a problem, and I think the company is more than willing to try to assist the city. Anyway, they can, I think right now it's important to note that a large part of the rate they pay goes towards solving that problem for the city, even though we're not causing it, and we're happy to do that. And I think that's something that is important. And as you deal with the various agencies, whether it's EPA or IDIM or whatever, IONTEC and IONCO will be willing to help in whatever way they can in terms of...
And you're specifically referencing the pilot payments?
No.
No?
Representing the fact that if you go and look at the components of the, of the, how the rate is figured out, a large proportion, even more than the pilot, is for capital projects that are dealing with the stormwater sewer issue that is caused elsewhere, but all the ratepayers have to pay it, and we're one of the ratepayers.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we, yes, you have a question?
I'll make a motion. Based on the fact that there is no storm water, also that the water that comes from this user is much cleaner than typical water, and the fact that they have essentially paid for this line, which other users in the city benefit from, I'd like to make a motion to, motion for the adoption of 1707.
Second.
We would like to have a roll call. With all due respect, sir, if you can hear me right now, go ahead, Ms. Fowler.
Roll call vote, motion on 1707?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Counselor Member Boardy?
Aye.
Counselor Member Furley?
Aye.
Counselor Member White?
Aye.
Counselor Member Preston?
Aye.
Counselor Member Kelly?
Aye.
Counselor Member Burton?
Aye.
Counselor Member Varnas?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye. Eight ayes. Thank you so much for that. Okay, now we would like to have the reading of 1708, please.
1708, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as the northeast corner of Adams Road and US 21, South Bend, Indiana, 46628, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a six-year real property tax abatement for GLC Portage Prairie 3 LLC.
Do you have, Chair?
Yes. Thank you for your patience, and the Community Investment Committee sends this forward favorably.
Thank you. I present to you, please state your name and address and begin, please.
Aaron Gop, Community Investment, 14th floor of this building. As my, as our report indicates, the city worked, these guys staff worked with the petitioner to come up with a payment structure that kind of best meet at the needs of the city and the developer. The petitioner is investing approximately 13 and a half million dollars towards the construction of a new 315,000 square foot facility in the Amerplex District. After the six-year abatement is complete, the annual tax generation from this project will be roughly just over $300,000 a year. And to address a question that council had asked of us, the city's investment in this project would equate to about 13% of the overall project cost. And with that, I will turn it over to the petitioner.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you can begin your presentation.
Good evening. Jeff Smoke with Greylakes Capital. 112 West Jefferson, I'll just keep it very brief. Earlier, some of the feedback was, does the tenant have an affirmative action plan? And I emailed those to you all, and I have hard copies right here. And also, one of your questions was, what was the makeup of the workforce? I reached out and they got back to me, it was about 44% minorities in the local workforce, full-time employees, and they're actually going to be hiring a few more, a few more employees in the 100 jobs, about 139.
So what do you have with you, sir, again?
This is the affirmative action and hiring policies of the tenant, CTDI.
Cat Clark, will somebody get that for us?
I've emailed you all copies also, but...
I'm sorry, I haven't been able to see my computer. Just start it down right as you can, and just email those copies. If anybody wants to take a look at it, you want to take?
I have, I saw them.
You see it? You see it? Okay, so the email, anybody? Okay. Right here, if somebody wants to see it. All right. Thank you, sir. Hold on a sec. Any questions for Mr. Smoke or who is?
I have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
You said 44% minorities, is that minorities, women minorities, is it racial minorities or gender minorities or all minorities?
Racial minorities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for giving that information, I appreciate that. All righty. And Ms. White?
Well, I'd also, again, you know, echo your words of thank you, but that's a good percentage, that 44% of all minorities. Appreciate that, and also appreciate you giving that information to us as quickly as you have been able to do.
Thank you. Okay. We now open it up, are you finished your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Open up, those who would like to speak in favor of this bill, please come forth. Those who would like to speak in opposition of this bill, please come forth. Seeing that public hearing is closed, it's your pleasure.
Motion to send, I'm sorry, motion for adoption of 1708.
Okay, Ms. Fowler, please.
Counselor Member Boardy?
Aye.
Counselor Member Furley?
Aye.
Counselor Member White?
Aye.
Counselor Member Preston?
Aye.
Counselor Member Kelly?
Aye.
Counselor Member Burton?
Aye.
Counselor Member Varnas?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye. Thank you. Eight ayes. Now we will move to, that is passed, thank you for having your name, thanks very much. A resolution of 1709?
Resolution 1709, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 321 South Main Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46601, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year real property tax abatement for Hybric Development LLC.
Community Investment sends this forward favorably.
Thank you, Chair. It was good.
Aaron Gop, Community Investment, 14th floor of this building. The petitioner is looking to invest just over $5 million towards the rehabilitation of an abandoned building here downtown, just kind of adjacent to Corwin's Field, which will consist of a mix of office, retail, and residential, along with the street-level public space. Before you is a request for a five-year abatement, after which the annual tax generation would be roughly $94,000 annually. And the city investment for this project will be roughly 9%. So with that, I will again turn it over to the petitioner.
Thank you. I almost thought it was the city of Arkansas back there, it's working. My God, hey, good to see you.
Good evening. Mark Neal from Haver Development at 1329 East Washington Street. I'll be brief, given the lateness of the hour, but certainly one indicating any questions. Very excited about our project. Just to orient you and the residents here this evening, we're located at 321 South Main, oops, please make that my pointer here, apologies. 321 South Main, just across from the library parking lot, next to the 18th. The building was built in 1926, it's an industrial manufacturing building by the children of Charles Kibbert, started the business in 1889, he had off, he had first, I think, office was on Jefferson Boulevard, second one was on Michigan Street, and then third one's still downtown, he built here on Main Street, next to and adjacent to, and actually a buddy to what was in a bank built in 1923. It was a printing company for many, many years, later known by Summers Graphics, maybe it was Steve Summers, who also ran the business for a few years. Then the building began falling, a little bit of state of disrepair, was taken over and used as a warehouse and also some computer repair leasing. They've consolidated it, they no longer needed the building, they borrowed it in September of last year with an effort to revitalize and repurpose the building. It's about 33,000 square feet. It is, I think, an exciting project because it is taking one of the old assets of South Bend, particularly in downtown South Bend, that currently is under effectively non-use and putting it back to use. Currently, it looks like this, again facing the library and library parking lot, well aware of the plans for the library and their revitalization, it also bucks the Gates Pre-owned car lot. Just a note on Gates, that they will, they have a lease that runs to the end of this year, 2017. They have an option for one more two-year renewal that can take until June of 2019. We have, we've worked with the Redevelopment Commission to acquire that land in the hopes that we can work something out so that we can in fact complete this first phase with some landscaping that we think you'll find attractive, as well as later a phase two in the next four or five years. But this is a rendering of the building, with the sky looking northeasterly, so a little bit above what that picture showed currently. You can see that there's a park plaza there, a public space. Really, the intention here is that we're trying to bring together, this is the link really, between what's going on currently and what we consider downtown, the Michigan Street corridor, and what's happening with South Bend downtown, Corwin's Field and the Renaissance and Union Station Technology Center. We believe this will be a crossroads, we think it's an important part to sort of fix some of these broken teeth, or missing teeth in our downtown. So we come before you with a building that we think is going to be really a pride of downtown. We're seeking both retail and office tenants, we believe the office tenant, we've worked out with our architect, Epic Architecture, in planning. Retail, we're looking at restaurants, also looking at some service businesses, thinking hair salon, barber shop, maybe some other kind of retail. But the spaces are not that large, but we think they will be, they will be important to the community as we look to serve our community as we continue to grow and expand our downtown. I will say this abatement is critical to the finances of the project. We have lead remediation issues, luckily no asbestos, but there are some significant costs in the demolition, basically, of the interior of the building as well as basically all the brick that's there, and so would ask for your support.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Neil? That's the time.
Yes, Mr. Boardy? The adjacent building you said was a bank, do you happen to know the name of that bank?
I don't. I know it was built in 1923.
I wonder if it failed in the bank space. Otherwise, I applaud the project.
The owner of that building, known since 1989, and if you ever go inside, his second and third floor offices, take them down to the brick, they are absolutely beautiful and give you some sense of what...
I wish there were more buildings to repurpose.
We do have members from the Historical Society here that may be able to answer their question. Nah, go ahead. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Seeing none, we now go to the public. Those who would like to speak in favor, please come forth. Seeing nobody else, and those who would like to speak in opposition, please come forth. The public hearing is now closed, members, it's your pleasure.
Motion to send 1709?
Set it in.
Okay, Ms. Fowler, could you please take your role?
1709. Counselor Member White?
Aye.
Counselor Member Preston?
Aye.
Counselor Member Kelly?
Aye.
Counselor Member Burton?
Aye.
Counselor Member Varnas?
Aye.
Counselor Member Boardy?
Aye.
Counselor Member Furley?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
It is passed. Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Now we move to bill for first reading. Bill number 1117.
First reading, 1117, first reading on the ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the legal description and map within the ordinance 01065-12, as previously amended, to expand the boundaries of the existing riverfront development project area under Indiana Code 7-1-320-16.
Motion to send the Community Investment for 313?
Aye. Okay, see ayes.
Aye.
Opposed? Is carrying. Now, on unfinished business, before we go to unfinished business, do you have a motion to give us a little break for 10 minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion that we recess for 10 minutes and reconvene at
second. Yeah, ten, ten forty-two it looks like.
Okay, call it thirty-two. Whatever, we're running that forty. It was ten minutes. Ten minutes. Do you have a second to that motion?
Second?
All of them say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It is carried, let's take a break.
All right.
Ten minutes.
We reconvene in ten minutes. There's a couple meetings happening. Thank you. The riverfront district.
Is it going down yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got it. It's in my doctor.
It's still rubbing. It's still my knee. It's the perfect size. Love this stuff. I'm tired.
Hey Brad, do you have anything on you?
Oh my god. Pretty bad.
That guy was informing us too, watch his passion. You were great. You were awesome.
Yeah.
Can't believe we couldn't get one more meeting. Oh, I remember where you're gonna look for a drop. I should have seen you. I should have.
I need to read this. I can't believe I'm doing this. He said what? Well, like I said, I, I'll, um, I'm a fan of the internet for, um, to talk to, uh, Eric Carvajal about the night. So with the name, I'm sure, you would be in, you already forgot, uh, I don't even know how, how her name is. I can't remember what's called, it kind of went away and I didn't really get it, they say in the last couple hours, but I know the guy's last president now. Well, it's crazy, yes, like, I mean, I'm surprised, like, what are you doing? Yeah, yeah. I love the name, get to the presentation, I'll confess that, right, yeah. No, no, this is, this is checking. Sure, thank you, thank you, good work. Well, you know, it's just, that's why, go understand that, I don't understand why, why would we pass this? This is worse than passing, that's what they're saying. It's worse, so I don't, I don't understand, isn't it? No, it doesn't matter, the facts don't matter. Facts don't matter, the record doesn't matter. Somebody's telling it's a good idea, it's a good idea. I have to do so hard. I know, I know, you work so hard on that. This is the one I like to have in contact with. Javis too, and Austin with that fact, that's really funny. Like, we just gotta get it done. Like, I, like, I feel like I was trying to get some of that, or, you know, last couple weeks, I'm like, why? I don't understand, because he was, in the beginning, I don't know. I don't know why you're researching, wow, this, really, this is, this is bad, I'm like, you just think, right? If you want that, come on, it's great. I don't know why it went down. I mean, how, what's it gonna happen? I mean, I didn't know it was coming. I didn't know it was carrying on. Well, I agree, it's like another game, it's not a challenge, but I think, you know, I think it's true, it's better to have a consistent, you know, for everybody. I think that's about, I think that's about, it benefits, that's what this is all about, I have, and then, it's those things, because like, when I, like, everything is really about keeping deference, like, the, you know, it's like, I asked every question, there's some people that find, how, and, you know, it's just fine in there. Well, it's an expert's ear, all the time, you know what I'm saying, it's just, you just never know, it depends on whoever is in power. It's so disappointing. It's so disappointing. Stand there. Just get stand there. I'm sure like, one of the, like, the other hours, they're gonna, you know, you know, you could suspend a little, you know. You know, they came here, I'm sorry.
Do you need a unanimous vote or not? Uh? Do I need a unanimous vote or doesn't, doesn't matter?
Um.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm sure you'll get it, yeah. I didn't want to make them wait any longer.
I'm gonna, we'll report back to you after we do it, and have you explain the rules. Okay, could you use the microphone a little closer? Thanks. Because this is new for all of us.
It's got good volume.
It could be, uh, it could be one minute.
Okay, are you going to the sugar rager?
Yeah.
Did you get, yeah, did some water? Pardon me? I can't hear?
You can, you can. You can hear that really well.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, even when you're just mungling. I'm like, I'm listening to him, y'all, he's trying, everybody's hearing everything, he was there, I asked him, he was down.
Yeah, everything. We are.
Down there. He was watching YouTube video. Andy, your record. Be careful. I think really picked everything up.
Is this turning here? I'm sorry.
Does he have a turn? Who was, uh, on the board? I see that, I see this, and then it's just, so much.
How many was the bat? We got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, we can ready to start. What was the rules? I had the rules, was it? Do you have your rules on there? I just had it? Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you. Can I just share the subject, please? Okay. Um, council is back in session. I have received a request that I'd like to share with you. We'd like to have a vote to suspend the rules, so we can hear, um, they're gone.
Go move.
Uh, the people who are planning to, um, uh, have privileges in Florida, so they're not staying?
Yeah, they just, they did, we aren't part of it.
You already talked to them?
I just talked.
Are they at peace?
Is anyone else?
Well, they will be, they follow through, all right.
Okay, then definitely there's no need to ask for that, really just wanted to make sure that they could leave.
Is there anyone else who would you speak on the privilege of authority? Is there anyone else?
Is there anybody else here who would, she would speak on the privilege of Florida?
I think they're out.
Okay, um, first of all, before we can do that, I'd like to have a, um, a vote to suspend the rules.
So move.
All of them say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? It is carried. Those like to speak on the privilege of the rules, um, you have, what, three minutes? And, uh, please state your name and address, and share your thoughts, and then, you're welcome to stay for the presentation afterwards, or you can go home and go to bed. Feel free. Ready? I'm ready.
Jesse Davis, P.O., Box ten two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. Um, tonight I brought you some documents, I know we don't have a privilege of a floor for them anymore, but I've been here, I've been to the legal department, I've put in numerous FOIAs, I've dealt with three different city attorneys, a state police detective, to try and get information on the equipment that was returned to the city mysteriously back in two thousand and fifteen. I started this back in March of two thousand and fifteen, I went at it up until current time. The last correspondence I had via the city legal department was on January fourteenth of two thousand and sixteen, and their email to me stated that the state investigation about this was over and it had been turned over to a, another entity. And as soon as that investigation was completed, they would get the information to me. Numerous times I've been told they would get the information to me. But again, zero transparency, zero accountability. These are the kind of issues we've got going on in the city. The police tapes, this equipment that was returned, we had city people putting that patio in for the mayor's chief of staff, you know? I could list you probably dozens. Never ever get resolved. Kick down the road, we never get no answers. I'd like some answers, I'd like to know why it's taken two years and I still haven't got the information through legal FOIAs that I should have gotten. If I need to file a complaint downstate, I'll do so.
I know.
But I think the council should be able to solve these problems. Mr. Scott keeps sending me letters saying, go through the right channels, take it to this department, take it to the legal department. Man, I've done it. Here's your proof of it. So I'll leave this here with you, and you can all look it up.
Okay, please get that in, that'd be great. Thank you. Um, next, please.
Samuel Brown, two 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 East, uh, Rock Street, the West Coast group process is in the United. Okay. This here. Put your trash out, got it on the sidewalk, you got a mangy truck, it's coming down a little narrow street like this, parking on one side, you cannot get to these totes because of the parking situation with that huge truck. Now, why do you got that one man truck coming down the street like that? So when he gets out, puts this on his side, now if you want your tote off the sidewalk, two foot off the curb, fine, does it get, does it get, it's sitting out there, you can get, you can't get to it because the car parking on the one side. Now, the other thing is, whenever you get to one of your totes and empty, uh, into his truck, you put it out in the street, and you know where that tote at, the tote is playing Russian roulette with the wind is blowing. You'd be surprised, that big grubber, that you put your garbage and stuff in, you put it out there in the street, and when the wind takes that thing, it flies down there like a piece of paper. It's unsafe, it's dangerous for cars, I mean, you go down there, that street, and you're picking up, uh, totes, because the wind is so strong. So whoever's over that trash, got to get that guy out there, visually see what that truck is up against. It's not that worker. It's just an unsafe condition for him to drive that truck down and drop it up there trash. So I want you to find out, when you die here, when you're contacted, see when you can get them out there and get that straight. Would you want it?
What is that tag?
This is, he let me know that he want that tote, put two foot off the curb, so if the curb is here, you want two foot off the curb, and you put it on the street. So when you come through there, if you can get to it, but if it's a car or something, parked there, then you get to it nowhere. So, what I want you to do, I mean, would you get back with me? And now, then I got to research it and get the guy out there.
All right, sir. Thank you. Anybody else coming for a purpose of the floor? Seeing that the privilege of the floor is not closed, and now, we'd like for our clerk to read the, uh, business under the unfinished business.
Unfinished business. Appeal of certificate of appropriateness for twelve forty West Thomas Street, Boyd versus Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you, I'd like for our attorney, um, before we hear anybody, I'd like for our attorney, Aladeen DeRosa, to explain the procedures of government's appeals of Historic Preservation Commission to the Common Council, and give us what, how we should proceed tonight.
Uh, thank you, um, I was the council, ladies and gentlemen, we're sorry that you're here so late this evening, and that this may be another hour. Uh, the council has developed procedures for handling appeals from Historic Preservation Commission decisions. We hear them rarely, um, once every decade, and this is your, your lucky evening. Um, the petitioner will have a maximum of twenty minutes to present his or her case, which should also address the specific issue under review, the petitioner's statement of his or her position, relevant witnesses, if any, and requested action which the petitioner is seeking. The Historic Preservation Commission will then go next with a maximum of twenty minutes, including its statement of position, its relevant witness statements, if any, and its requested actions which the HPC, Historic Preservation Commission, seeks. The petitioner then will have five minutes maximum for rebuttal. After that, the commission or the council may ask questions of all the parties. After that, the commission or the council may ask questions of all the parties, up to a maximum of 15 minutes for that published portion of the hearing. The action of the HPC shall be reviewed by the members of the council as a quasi-judicial body to determine whether the HPC's action in denying a certificate of appropriateness was arbitrary, capricious, and abusive discretion, or otherwise not in accordance with applicable law, whether it's contrary to constitutional right, power, privilege, or immunity, whether it's an excess of statutory jurisdiction, authority, limitation, or statutory rights, or without observation of procedures required by applicable law and ordinance, or if it's unsupported by substantial evidence. Each member of council shall have the opportunity to comment before a motion on disposition of this appeal is accepted by the chair. And the record of the, uh, council consists of the minutes of the HPC meeting as certified, uh, I'm sorry, the certification of documents received from the Historic Preservation Commission, consisting of minutes from the public meeting dated September 19th, 2016, Mr., the letter of denial of Mr. Boyd's application dated September 27th, 2016, Mr. Boyd's application for certificate of appropriateness, the staff report concerning the certificate of appropriateness, and correspondence from the building commissioner. All those materials are in evidence and, uh, and for the review of the council. Also, as part of the process, uh, the submission by the petitioner in support of his, uh, in support of review, as well as the attorney for the HPC's submission, and all attachments as evidence to that submission. Those are the, uh, those, those pieces of evidence are before the council. And so, Mr. Boyd, uh, do you understand all of the, uh, the procedures that will govern tonight's hearing? All right, you may proceed, sir.
Thank you, council, for your time. I'll try to be as brief as possible. Um, I'm going to focus mostly on the roof. That seems to be the biggest issue. The, uh, other issues that are on the application items such as the siding and windows, um, addition, those things I think can be hashed out. Um, as far as, uh, the staff report from HPC, they do, um, favor the addition that is added on, permits duty to be applied for that, that section of the building. Focusing back onto the roof. Um, according to the ordinance 9495, HPC guidelines, a building application is deemed an application for a COA. Furthermore, an ordinance, uh, the ordinance requires that the building department forward the application to the historical preservation within five business days, not 360 days. I applied for a building permit through the business office of the building department. According to the ordinance, it is their responsibility to take my application and give it to historical preservation. They didn't do that for almost a year. I'm not held liable for that because, according to the ordinance, that is the responsibility of the building commissioner. I filed this application on October 2015. The St. Joseph County Building Commissioner failed to forward my application until August 2016. I have a sworn affidavit from the building commissioner that states he has made that mistake, someone in his office did not do the proper procedures of the ordinance. He acknowledges the department in not forwarding the, uh, the application for a pitched roof. If the city accidentally authorized and permitted a gable roof rather than a flat roof, the HPC failed to prepare and issue an individual historical preservation plan as required by the same ordinance, the question is, why do I have to pay for it? The ordinance that I'm referencing, uh, 9495-04, requires the, the historical preservation to issue a historical preservation plan for all historical property and landmarks in St. Joseph County. I don't have one, nor have I been given one in six years I have on the property. Had I had that in my possession, or the building commissioner, we could say, okay, they want this kind of roof, they want this kind of gable, they want this kind of pitch, they want this kind of window, they want this kind of siding. Now, they keep referencing a general, uh, procedure of, of things that they want as far as materials, however, that's not what the ordinance calls for. Uh, as far as their denial, the reasons for denial, the first one's going to be losing architectural integrity. Changing from a flat, uh, roof to a pitched roof will cause historical rating to drop. However, HPC approved the change from a flat roof to a pitched metal roof on November 10th, 2011. Uh, according to HPC guidelines, it states that HPC must evaluate the damage or determine to public welfare if they approve construction that is permitted even though it is not deemed appropriate, and evaluate the potential hardship that the denial would cause. Uh, the residents of St., uh, of Thomas Street are realistic in nature, and we're more concerned about losing the actual structure than losing architectural integrity. The building has been vacant and abandoned for almost seven years with no roof. We've got prostitution, crack addicts in the basement with needles, that's what we're dealing with in my neighborhood. Removing the building, that's not what we want. We don't want any more vacant lots where people are dumping trash and, and things of that nature. As far as the architectural integrity, HPC has failed to evaluate the owner's sweat equity, capital investment between 10,000 and 15,000, and the financial hardship, uh, in removing the current pitched roof or replacing it with a flat roof would incur. Now, the second thing, or the reason for denying my application was structural insolence. St. Joseph Building Commissioner and City Engineer met with the owner on site 9/29/2016 to perform progress check. Building Commissioner states the structural engineer is needed to evaluate and also needs to file Homeland Security permit with whose jurisdiction supersedes the local building department. Based on the recommendation of the, the building commissioner, I employed a licensed structural engineer who's licensed in Texas, Florida, Indiana, and Colorado. He's done two inspections of my property and says that the roof is perfectly fine at 95% because it's not complete. So, if the roof is structurally fine, according to the licensed structural engineer in the state of Indiana, I can't agree with historical preservation because, one, they're not a structural engineer, and, two, obviously, they're not going to weigh on my side. Now, regarding the structural engineer, he's a structural engineer, he's, has a master degree from Notre Dame, he evaluated the project, he evaluated the roof, and this report is sealed by the state of Indiana. Now, the other thing that they denied my application based upon is a lack of other options of flat roof quotes. When I met with him, I gave him a flat roof quote, which I have with me here. This flat roof quote is dated from 2013, from South Bend Roofing, Siding and Window Company. It's for $23,600. This is just for the rubber membrane, not for the application, not for the decking, not for the installation, none of that. And this is from 2013, which means that I researched the flat roof before I went with the roof that the city allowed me and permitted me to do. So that's why the flat roof is taken off the table. They want more quotes for flat roofs, and that's the only thing they're saying that they'll approve. However, once again, they approved a gable roof in 2011, and I have that, that document with me as well. Now, lack of other options. The flat roof was never proposed or suggested to, uh, by the owner by HPC. HPC previously approved a metal pitched roof on November 10th, 2011, and issued the owner a COA for the replacement roof. HPC guidelines ordinance, which I referenced before, requires HPC to develop a historical preservation plan for landmarks and assist in the implementation of such plans. Owner has no knowledge nor was given a specific preservation plan for 1240 West Thomas. Such failures and refusal and reversal, I apologize, of previous approved HPC's, uh, COAs has contributed to the hardships placed on the owner of 1240 West Thomas. Now, the historical preservation was, was given a flat roof, which I showed you, and it's only for the rubber, it's not for the decking or the installation of the actual, uh, choices. The, the firehouse burned around 2007, so when you look up, basically, there's no roof. All of that has to be repaired. Now, again, the quote was for $23,000. HPC's solution, uh, for this problem of a gable roof, which the city has permitted and allowed, is that we remove this roof and we put in a flat roof in that I myself have heard the cost, or that Community Investments, uh, fits the bill. Now, regarding resources in the city, I have what's called a file of denial. My file of denial is any opportunity or resource in the city that I've, I've reached out to and basically I've been turned down. Regarding the vacant, uh, vacant to value grant program, I spoke with Elizabeth in Community Investments. She says my property is not vacant or abandoned enough. Once again, we've got prostitution, drug addiction, and vandalism going on. I've got copies of police reports where people literally have driven their car back into my garage door, picked it up, put it on their truck, and I found it at the scrapyard. I think this is vacant and abandoned, ladies and gentlemen, but, once again, I've got letters to Scott Ford, who I have learned no longer works with Community Investments, still waiting for a reply. I've got, uh, a letter to the restorer, St. Joseph County, asking for donations or possibly discounts. This is from 2014, no reply. I have the South Bend, Southeast, I'm sorry, the Southeast Bering County Landfield Authority, uh, dated, uh, February 20, 2014, asking for discounts or some type of help with dumpsters to remove some of the debris, still waiting on a reply from 2014. What I'm trying to tell you is, you want development in the city of South Bend, you want change in the city of South Bend, I especially want in my neighborhood, and I'm trying to do that. Um, my wife and I, bless her heart, we've moved over 30,000 pounds of debris out of that building by hand, and I've got the proceeds to prove. What I'm asking for today is pretty simple. I'm asking for a preservation plan for my property so you can tell me exactly what you want me to do so I can do it right the first time. The other thing I'm asking for is that you accept the roof the way it is. You gave a permit for the roof, my structural engineer says the roof is fine, if the city made a mistake and you want the roof changed, I'm asking you to fit the bill. Community Investments, I've met with them twice within the past couple of months, on, based on the suggestion of historical preservation, they're finally reaching back to me after I sent them the emails from 2015, asking for a response. Once again, if they want to fit the bill, I'm perfectly fine and happy with you guys changing the roof as long as you're paying for it. I can't get on that roof again. I just can't, I'm sorry. I've done it once, I, I can't do it again. So those are the two things I'm requesting. Preservation plan for my property, which I've been denied, according to the South Bend ordinance, I'm required to have one. The, uh, historical preservation was supposed to prepare one, it's been seven years, there isn't one. And the other thing is, simply put, if the roof is going to change, I, I prefer that, uh, the Community Investments pays for that, and that if that's not going to happen, I prefer that we keep the roof the way it is, it's structurally sound, it's correct, it's built to standards. I'm a licensed building contractor, I've done this before, and I feel that, based on the information that you have in front of you, it gives a little bit of transparency on what's happening across the street. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Council for the Historic Preservation Commission?
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. And thank you, council. I'm glad, I, I don't have to say good morning, but I can still say good evening. I, I spoke, uh, before to, uh, the councilman. I need to make a disclosure that, in fact, the councilman, or the counsler and I have been acquaintances for, for numerous years, uh, both he and his family, so I want that on the record.
Dr. Barner helped with my teeth since I was about you big. So, good evening, council, and I will too, I too will try to be brief. Uh, my name is Brett Hummer, um, I'm an attorney in town, and, uh, I'm also privileged to serve as a, a deputy county attorney, uh, for St. Joseph County, and in that capacity, I get to, uh, help the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, both, since it is a creature of a city ordinance and a county ordinance, uh, in both capacities. So, uh, thank you for your time tonight. I suppose, while I'm rushing my head, I'll just kind of work backwards in regards to a couple of the things that Mr. Boyd pointed out, um, in regards to what he's saying, and then I'll, I'll get back to why I think this is really a fairly straightforward, uh, decision. So, so first of all, um, Mr. Boyd has referenced that, uh, the city has approved this, this gable roof idea. Um, that's, that's incorrect, uh, and in the materials he had before you, um, and what, what should be made known is, to here tonight as well, is regardless of what you as a council does in terms of saying HPC's decision was proper or not, um, this, this property is entangled with, with other, um, issues of the building department. So it's, it's not going to end the issue regardless of what you say HPC does. There's a letter in the materials that you have from, um, Building Commissioner Beulah, uh, August 10th, 2016, um, and it, and it does speak to this, this roof. So this certainly, um, does not support the idea that the city has previously approved this idea of a gable roof on this historic landmark. Uh, this was to the Historic Preservation Commission from Mr. Beulah, August 10th, 2016. Dear Alicia, on October 13th, 2015, this office issued a building permit for commercial roofing at the above referenced address. But this is the important one. What was to be a structural repair and re-roofing job has now morphed into a partial roof on the main building and a new second story addition on the rear of the building. None of this has been properly permitted. So, that, that's very important to, uh, understand. In addition to that, um, the, the pre, the prior approval that Mr. Boyd speaks of and what HPC did, it was not in regards to approving a new fangled gable roof on this historic landmark. Mr. Boyd was granted back in 2011, a, an RME, which, um, I'm going to be speaking out of a super logo with you, I apologize. Uh, HPC uses that term for routine maintenance exclusion, and that means that's an in-kind replacement is in, is in, used when a repair is actually needed, such as the fire that Mr. Boyd referenced to, to the building. The roof had collapsed, so he didn't have to go through the certificate of appropriateness application process. He could just go to staff as he did in 2011 and say, "I've got, I don't have no roof, I need to replace this and repair it in kind, the metal roof that was on there, the flat roof that was on there," and that's what was approved, excuse me, in 2011. Nothing in that RME, and that's an Exhibit B, uh, to the materials that we produced, nowhere in that you will notice does it reference a gable roof, this asymmetrical gable pitched roof that Mr. Boyd has now put on his, uh, building without prior approval. Uh, it states nowhere in there, um, that that gable roof is approved, it simply says "replace metal roofing." And, so, um, that's important to keep in mind as well. And in regards to, um, what Mr. Boyd referenced as far as what the building department did, um, back in 2015, when he applied for a building permit, it is true that that was never received and never forwarded on to HPC. The legal effect of that is, HPC did not and could not have considered that an application for a certificate of appropriateness. If the building department receives an application for a building permit, it is required by its ordinance to forward that on to HPC. I agree with Mr. Boyd, that's not his fault, that that didn't happen, and that didn't come from the building department. It's also not HPC's fault for not receiving something that should have been forwarded to it as well. So, what happened there was, back in August of 2015, when he applied for the permit with the building department, that was never forwarded on to HPC. It was never taken in then, at that time, as a certificate of appropriate, um, application. If it had been, we would be here probably last February instead of where we are today. But, um, in, in light of that, HPC didn't have to take any action with that. When it did receive the application, most recently, um, in August of 2016, when that permit was finally forwarded and they, they learned of that, they properly and promptly docketed that on their September, uh, 2016 agenda as they do, and they did for every other application for a CVA. So, uh, and then that's where I'll turn to next, I suppose, into why I think the council certainly should affirm the HPC's decision, uh, having dealt with Mr. Boyd's, um, arguments. So, fortunately, it, it's, it's very late in the evening, and you do not have to sit here, as Ms. DeRose indicated, as, uh, members of a jury. You don't have to reweight evidence, so to speak. Uh, the standard of review here is very high, and I think it's high for a reason. The HPC is granted appro, uh, authority through the ordinances that this council has put into, to effect to consider and either grant or deny an application for a certificate of appropriateness for its properties and historic, um, districts or which are historic So, fortunately, it's very late in the evening, and you do not have to sit here, as Ms. DeRose indicated, as members of a jury, you don't have to reweight evidence, so to speak. The standard of review here is very high, and I think it's high for a reason. The HBC is granted authority through the ordinances that this council has put into effect to consider and either grant or deny an application for a certificate of appropriateness for its properties and historic districts or which are historic landmarks. This property in particular is a historic landmark, also created by this council back in 1999 through ordinance number 9037-99 on September 27. This council granted landmark, historic landmark status to this property, and that should mean something. If we are to allow major construction projects to historic designated landmarks in our town without prior approval through HBC, which is required by the ordinance, why are we calling these things historic landmarks? I appreciate the situation that Mr. Boyd is in, but this process was in effect, and certainly he knew about HBC back in 2011 because he went to them at that time, but yet he went ahead and started this construction project of this gabled asymmetrical roof without prior approval with HBC, and that's what caused the major issue at the September meeting when this was finally before the HBC properly. So, what you have before you here, the standard of review that Ms. DeRose indicated, was HBC arbitrary and capricious? I don't know why, as lawyers, it's probably for job security, we have to use these kind of words and terms, but did they throw the ordinance out the window? Did they throw the process of procedure out the window and just decide on a whim what they were going to do here? No, they were not arbitrary and capricious. Did they violate any of Mr. Boyd's constitutional rights or statutory rights? No. Did they act without observance to the procedure and what's in the HPC ordinance? No, and I will explain how they did observe that in just a minute. But it is a high standard, and I think the council should respect that respectfully and give deference to the ordinance as written. Mr. Boyd really did not necessarily touch on too many of those issues in his position here just now as far as why he thinks he meets within some of those standard of reviews before you, but the HBC reviewed his application here last fall as it would any other application. His application was, as he mentioned, for approval to construct an asymmetrical gabled roof on top of this firehouse, this landmark, and in Exhibit A to what you have, it shows the picture of the firehouse as it was in 1999 when this council granted a historic landmark status. You will note it has a flat roof, a flat line roof, and it does not look anywhere close to what Mr. Boyd has since put on this roof without approval from HPC. Unfortunately, he started on the project before getting that approval, and as of the time of the September 19, 2016 meeting at HPC, as I referenced to Mr. Beulah's letter back in August, he had not obtained the necessary permits to do what he had already done on that property as well. So, despite that, HPC did consider Mr. Boyd's application, and it considered the ordinance factors as it is allowed to do. The ordinance specifically says that the HPC can consider the following when it's reviewing a C of A, a certificate of appropriateness, application. It can consider the appropriateness of the proposed alteration or construction, that's one. It can consider the detriment to the public welfare if the alteration is permitted, and the other one is, it can consider the potential hardship of a denial of the application, or that the potential hardship, a potential denial will cause to the applicant if it's denied. And then it can also consider, this is something Mr. Boyd alluded to, he is suggesting that the HPC has dropped the ball in terms of preparing some sort of preservation plan with respect to his property. The HPC does not, is not required to go out proactively and develop preservation plans for every single individual historic landmark or property within its jurisdiction. What that means is, it is by ordinance, allowed and permitted and should create at least minimum maintenance expectations for districts or for historic landmarks. It has done that, and they refer to those as Group B standards. And by the way, Mr. Kuzinski is here, president of HPC, and Ms. Fiesel, executive director, they certainly know a lot more about this than I do, but if any questions need to be answered, they can also come up here afterwards. But, there is a preservation plan in effect for what this property is, it's a historic landmark. So, these Group B standards also are included with the materials before you, that's in my position statement as Exhibit J. And, most importantly, and I think you could probably just hone in on this quote and promptly realize that what was done here by HPC was appropriate. It says in the Group B standards, which are applicable to historic landmarks like this group property, additions to landmarks should not detract from the original form and unity of the landmark. And really, all we need to look at is the picture of what this building looked like at the time landmark status was granted to it in 1999, and what Mr. Boyd has now done to this roof. It is completely and unfortunately destroyed and decimated what was a very historical and classic looking firehouse station with a flat roof as it was built, when it was built. And so, it has violated the Group B standards. HPC, at the meeting, in its public meeting in September, it was a unanimous nine to zero vote in favor of denying Mr. Boyd's application. It did a roll call vote in denying that, and a brief reading of those comments, if I may, I think shows exactly how the commission respected and appreciated what's in its ordinance as far as the factors that it can consider. It also shows that they were mindful of the Group B standards applicable to historic landmarks. It also shows that they were inclined to listen to Mr. Boyd's financial issues with it, you will hear overtones of that in these roll call letters. So, the nine commissioners present there, I'll just read these for you briefly, but these are in the materials, and let me see if I can point you to that. This is Exhibit H in your packet, it's on page six. Commissioner Gordon moved to deny the application. Commissioner Hurdle, all of these are votes in favor of denying the application. Commissioner Hurdle's statement though with her vote was, "The best course of action in maintaining the historic integrity of the building." So obviously, she's concerned with the architectural integrity and the appropriateness of this, and the public detriment in allowing this, because frankly, the public detriment here is eviscerating landmark status to a previously designated historic landmark. Commissioner Parker also voted the same way, she said, "Due to the architectural character of the building and the lack of other options quotations." And so she's also considering the financial hardship that this might create to Mr. Boyd, although he kind of already did this to himself respectfully, with going about this without getting the application first. But, it does show that he, that the commissioners were interested in the quotation and the financial aspects of this project. Commissioner Anderson, when he voted, he cited to the lack of conforming to architectural integrity of historic building, again, that's to the appropriateness of the proposed construction which is in the ordinance itself. And then Commissioner Gordon, his comment was not in keeping with the integrity of landmark status, so again, kind of harkening to the idea that this is a historic landmark and this construction is really deleting that stature as a historic landmark. Commissioner Kuzinski, he stated, "The work is not in keeping with landmark standards and guidelines like those Group B standards I mentioned. The work was performed without prior approval by the HPC and the Building Department. Evidence suggests that the new changes are not structurally sound and in compliance with the current building code." And if I could go down a slight rabbit trail on that one, Mr. Boyd also referenced that he had some out of state approvals showing that this is structurally sound. Those were not before the HPC at the time of the meeting in September, so I would just want the council to be aware of that. Jumping back into what Commissioner Kuzinski said though, again, this goes to the fact that the commission did consider the financial aspect of this, the potential financial detriment to Mr. Boyd. It says, "There is only one quotation obtained by the applicant for any kind work." So, the commission was curious as to what financial impact this might have on Mr. Boyd. He had paid one, like he said, for 23 some thousand dollars. The commission asked him there, you know, "Well, isn't there another roofing company that could maybe look at this? It's a very expensive project." So they were looking at that with him at the time of the meeting, and Mr. Kuzinski also said, "There is insufficient documentation to consider alternative proposals at this time," and that's getting at the financial hardship or the potential financial hardship and that. There was one quotation presented, so HPC could not really collaborate with Mr. Boyd at that time, even if they wanted to, to work through some potential resolution. Commissioner Hall also harkening to the potential hardship about this, he said, "It's a tough decision because of all the work the owner has put into it. The building, if it were restored in that neighborhood, would be a classic piece. That is a difficult option here, but there is hope that there may be ways to achieve that." Commissioner Bucialetto, "Project does not meet standards and guidelines in particular that additions to landmarks should not detract from the original form." So that's going directly at those Group B standards that I mentioned earlier. He also said, "This roof as proposed will detract from the original form. Would like to see the building safe," and recommended that if a sloped roof is necessary financially, the owner would come back with a proposal that does not detract from the form of the structure. So again, the proper process here would be Mr. Boyd to come back with a new application for a certificate of appropriateness, one that would be in keeping and in kind with the landmark status, and we would go about it again. But, Mr. Bucialetto, obviously, keeping in mind the ordinance factors and the Group B standards, when he cast his vote as well. And then Commissioner Gelfman, the last one, she cited architectural integrity, lack of other quotes on a flat roof. Again, that kind of gets into their consideration of the potential financial hardship. Changing from a flat roof to gabled roof, losing the structural integrity of the building as is historically and materials being used. So, I think, you know, taking it straight from the horse's mouth, if you will, listening to what the commissioners, their mindset at the time they cast this vote to deny Mr. Boyd's application, I think it's clear that at least from the council's perspective, there was no arbitrary capriciousness here, there was no throwing out the statutes, this was not decided on a whim, they went through the process like they always do, and they considered what they can consider, the ordinance's parameters and also the Group B standards applicable to historic landmarks. So, with that being said, I'll end there, and like I said, I do have Mr. Kuzinski and Ms. Fiesel here, if any questions would like to be asked, but we would ask that the council sustain and affirm the HPC's decision to deny Mr. Boyd's application. Thank you very much.
Mr. Boyd, you have five minutes to read that.
I'll respond to some of Mr. Hummer's comments. First off, regarding the roof not being properly permitted, I will show you what I gave the city of South Bend on October 13, 2015. This right here is a blueprint, which shows the roof and the elevation of 10 feet. This was given to the Building Commissioner on that date and told of the elevation and what the roof would consist of as far as the materials. This is the backside of that document, this was also given to the Building Commissioner. This is the layout of the building, showing which side of the building was going to be roughed. Regarding his memo stating that the roof was not properly permitted, this is the permit which he actually issued me, and these are receipts which were filed out of check, and I do have a copy of bank statements if you'd like to see those, and this is the cost of those permits, and that is his signature. So this is what is deemed the proper permit for that roof. Regarding the meeting on, I think it was September, the hearing, the hearing was called based on the Building Commissioners', I guess, I guess conversations with Historic Preservation. He suggested that I talk with him and try to resolve the issue, considering in light of the mistake that he made. What Mr. Hummer will tell you is the document as far as the denials, but what he won't tell you, I'll move a little quicker, is what was discussed after I left the room. After I left the room, Commissioner, I believe it's Goldman, G.L.F. Goldman? Is that how you pronounce it? Commissioner Rothman asked the attorney, Mr. Hummer sitting right here, "Well, how do we find people or give violations to people who don't do what we tell them to do?" He said, "Well, you don't have the authority to do that, the common council hasn't given that to you." His response is, "Well, how do we get that? Well, you have to go to common council and ask for that." So Mr. Hummer suggested that they lean on the other parts of the city, such as code enforcement and the Building Commissioner, who can give violations. After this meeting, and after they had this discussion after I left the room, what was given to me weeks later is violations from the Building Department. Starting tomorrow, the 28th, I'm fined up to a thousand dollars a day for a roof that the city told me I could put up. He didn't tell you about that, did he? Well, that's what's going on. Now, regarding Mr. Hummer's comment...
Mr. Boyd, you need to limit yourself to the record that was presented to the council.
Sure, no problem. Regarding his comments as far as necessary permits, the roof is the issue that we're focusing on, and the roof, as I've showed you, was properly permitted. Now, their suggestion of replacing it and coming back to them with a COA for a flat roof, well, once again, if the roof you told me I could do is incorrect, why do I have to fit the bill? And if a flat roof is the first roof that you wanted, that's what you should have asked for. Regarding the policies and procedures, which he states they don't have to do a preservation plan for each landmark, page seven, if you turn it at the bottom, onto page eight, it says, "They're required to develop historical preservation plans for historical landmarks and districts and together with other public and private agencies and officials to assist in administration implementation of such plans." That's each landmark. I don't have one, it's been seven years.
You've finished, thank you, sir.
Can we see those documents?
I'm sorry.
Are we allowed to see those documents? Did he just hold it up?
That's a post-hearing, the record of the commission, the record of the council is limited to what was presented to the commission at that time.
Those drawings are in the packet.
The drawings are in the packet.
Now, we have 15 minutes for questions, so basically, there's eight of us, so everybody take two minutes, and which way was that, left or right?
Eight minutes.
No, two minutes, two minutes, any questions, you have a ten minutes?
No, I just wanted to make sure that we're focused.
Yeah, two minutes per person, and I just keep us close to it.
Basically, this hearing is based on the five points that have been shared with us, and so again, I want to make sure as we begin to look at all exhibits and the hearing and the vote, that our main charge is to focus on whether or not these particular actions by HPC were not adhered to.
Correct, okay. The standard was arbitrary capricious.
Yeah, arbitrary capricious.
So, you finished?
I'm finished.
Mr. Schreiber.
Sure, so, Mr. Hummer? Can I just see the...
You can just see the one question.
Okay.
And...
Would you please explain why, and I think this was a part of the record, but why the plan that he is requesting, why that wasn't provided, or why you think this kind of general plan is just kind of out there and should be observed? Just touch base a little more about the plan.
Sure, yeah, Mr. Boyd, absolutely. As Mr. Boyd actually, he just read it, and I don't really dispute what he just read, historic landmarks, plural. It doesn't mean go out and individually develop a preservation plan for every single landmark, but HPC should develop maintenance standards for historic landmarks. That's the preservation plan. How do we preserve these things? Well, they implement and adopt preserve minimum maintenance standards so that all owners of historic landmarks in the city understand in advance and upfront what those maintenance standards are, those, they refer to those, their Group B standards are the preservation plans.
I just have two minutes, so I gotta have...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, I did just one more question. With respect to the observation of procedures required by applicable law, regardless of whether or not HPC was given notice, did HPC essentially follow procedures outlined by law if he is supposed to receive, right, within five days he didn't receive something within 365 days? Were procedures followed?
Yes, absolutely, procedures were followed. When HPC, the way I can answer that is, when HPC did receive the building permit from August of 2015, not until August 2016, then properly by ordinance, it immediately put it on its docket for the next meeting in September of 2016.
But, did they observe the procedures required by applicable law, right, throughout the entire process? I mean, with or without fault of their own, it doesn't seem that they...
Yes, I would say they did.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
No, his time's up.
I was going to yield my two minutes, because it sounds like he was on point, but go ahead, I'll just pass.
To the attorney?
Yes, sir.
Have you, has, has the plan ever... Have you ever made a plan for any particular owner?
Like a tailored individual plan for...
Have you ever done it to anybody?
Yeah, that's probably a question better given for Mr. Kuzinski or...
Timothy Kuzinski, President of Historic Preservation Commission. The standards that we refer to as group B standards, or the district standards for any of the nonhistoric districts within the City of South Bend are derived from the National Park Service. So they're not proactive development standards, because we don't develop the properties, we don't own the properties. We do assist owners of historic properties with development ideas and opportunities and contacts and networking and that kind of thing.
So have you developed something for an individual plant?
The standards that we circulate are...
Not the standards, have you made a plan for somebody? Really?
The standards are the plan, because it's a plan on keeping the...
The plan that Mr. Boyd is talking about, have you ever done that for anybody?
I don't, I just think that's within our...
A custom plan, have you ever made a custom plan that Mr. Boyd has seen? In the history of your times?
Alicia informed me that Lieber Park is the only different set of custom standards because of the interest in the environment to pottery in the park.
So the answer is yes.
For the park.
The answer is no. I think the answer is no for buildings and yes for real estate.
Exactly.
Did you say that again?
The answer is no for buildings and yes for land.
Okay. All right, then the next thing, that part of your process does include talking, going through the building, is that a part of your process?
Sometimes. The ordinance restricts the HPC to aesthetics relevant to the exterior of the building.
But let me say, in this kind of a situation, is a part of your process going through the building department?
The building department and the Department of Code Enforcement, by law, by the ordinance that you passed, are both our enforcement agencies. And so they're partnership agencies. We don't have to enter the building to be able to do the work and...
I hear about that. But it's not a part of the process. You have to start there, right? Mr. Boyd has to start...
We start with an inspection of the property.
And then it goes to the building department? And then it comes to you all?
No, 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 no.
The one year that he did not get his information, isn't that a part of the process?
Yeah, Mr. Davis, if I may. So an owner of a historic landmark, basically, in order to obtain a certificate of appropriateness from HPC, could really take either one of two channels. One, they go to the HPC themselves, and frankly, that's how most of them come in, and they fill out paperwork and say, "I want to apply for a certificate of appropriateness." And then HPC obviously knows right then and there that that's what they want to do, and they put them on the agenda for the next meeting. The other route is if, that's what the ordinance allows, if they take it, if they go to the building department first, and it's supposed to toggle with the building department, okay, this is a historic, this is an historic district.
So that's to excuse me for my time. So that is a part of your process then, because you have two routes? Thank you.
So just to kind of put a timeline for my own mental, there was a, there was a Historic Preservation Commission approved a repair and maintenance only deal with regard to taking care of the damage of a homeowner roof.
Yes, 2011.
But that, that particular approval was strictly for repair, not for any new...
The staff has no authorization to approve any aesthetic changes.
Okay. At a later date, the building department did issue a permit which was applied for by Mr. Boyd.
Yeah, he was actually caught by a building inspector constructing the roof that's there now, and was subsequently sent to the building department.
Okay.
The building department was in a bit of a hurry to give him a permit.
At some point, they did issue, yeah, but they did issue a permit, and they wouldn't have issued a permit if they hadn't believed that it was structurally acceptable. They'd take structural consideration and do it.
That's a point of contention in the building department. Yeah.
Okay. It is understood, at least at this point, that the, somehow or other, the building department forgot to make the connection between the HPC as far as their responsibility.
Yeah, rarely happens.
And that...
It does happen.
I'm sorry. And that leaves us where we are as of today, in that there had been some construction with an appropriate permit, but not with a certificate of appropriateness.
Yeah, correct. That's all the certificate of appropriateness process.
There were additional construction efforts, from an addition on the back, that the building department still has never approved.
So there were other unpermitted issues.
That has happened since HPC's denial back in 2016.
And by not, when Mr. Boyd came back to you, the, it had been, it was recognized at that point that construction had taken place without a certificate of appropriateness, which is separate from the building permit that he had. Okay. And that brings us to where we are today.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
So is there a time factor that kicks in when the applicant came to the building department? Was there, is there an automatic amount of time that...
The building department has five days to be able to provide the information to the HPC.
That's what they have to do.
All right, so that ball was dropped?
But not by HPC.
Right.
Still a process.
And I guess I want to make sure in terms of the record, the license engineer who looked at the structure of the roof, that was not at the earlier hearing? It wasn't evidence of the earlier hearing?
No.
And then what about the sworn statement by the building commissioner that he made a mistake? Was that entered into the record or any consideration?
Not at that time.
Not at that time. Yeah, we actually reached out, we were trying to figure out what he was saying. So we obtained that from him to show that we did not have an application for a certificate of appropriateness before, but what we learned of it, we did act for...
And when you purchase, I assume Mr. Boyd was the original purchaser of this property? At the time of purchasing, you know that it's a historic property?
You're asking me?
Yes.
When I purchased it, I did reach out to HPC and...
Turn the mic, please, sir.
The historical preservation specialist came to the property. I invited him to come through the property, possibly do some type of assessment. I don't have any paperwork on that. But I did know it was historic, and I did reach out to him, and I spoke with the director, Kathy Hostel, I believe is her name. And I told her I wanted to roof the building, and that it was exposed to elements, and something needed to happen. I explained to her it needed a roof, and she said, "Well, what kind of roof are you considering?" And I said, "Metal." And if you look on that permit, it says metal. This building never had a metal roof. Metal was considered because I figured it'd be the cheapest thing to put on it. So as far as RME or COA, ADC, EBD, I don't understand what they're talking about. I just know she gave me a piece of paper that said I could start putting a roof on the building. So that was my understanding.
So you were or weren't aware of the group B standards?
I wasn't. I wasn't given that until last year, I think before hearing or something, but there's some kind of guidelines.
And whose responsibility is that typically, to be aware or to become aware of those standards?
I don't know. When I purchased the property, I reached out to them about fixing the property. No paperwork was given to me, so...
But yet, you knew you purchased a historic house?
I did.
Or a facility?
That's right. When I applied for a permit from the building department, I was given a permit that told I could roof the building to the gable roof. And I gave them the blueprint, so I thought everything was correct.
So the RME was specific to a re-roof, right?
Partial re-roof, or I guess repair, I guess is what they're saying.
But then pivoting off of that, an additional story was added?
The back portion is a one-story garage. There was a flat roof that was there at one time. We gutted that, and we also took out the garage door to repair that. It was dilapidated. And upon trying to recreate a flat roof, it wasn't successful, so we decided we would structurally put in a, just a one-story add-on, nothing too fancy for the neighborhood. It's the back of the property, and in the past, HPC has approved that, add-ons to the rear, because it's on the face of the building. According to HPC...
It had approved that in this case, or in general case?
No, in the past, in the past, they approved it.
In other buildings?
Other property residential. As far as regarding the staff report too that was given to the hearing, they're in favor of that addition. So that's why I haven't really talked about the addition. I did say that the permits do need to be applied for, but there's really not much objection to it.
Well, actually, there is no objection to the addition, but the...
Excuse me, could you go to the mic, please?
And the windows.
Like for...
At least if he's all start preservation. There was no objection. Actually, the commission approved the addition to the second story, but they did not approve the siding and the windows to be applied, salvaged that Mr. Boyd obtained as a donation. And after the siding and windows were denied, he installed them anyway.
Got you.
That is correct. That was subject to a demo hearing in the middle of January, so if there's no progress, they tear your building down. So if something had to happen in twin code, historical preservation, homeland security, you got to make everybody happy, so...
Got you.
I wish those things can be changed.
Just a point of order, that you must consider the materials that were presented at the time of the hearing.
Point of order. When you're saying the materials was in it, that includes the stuff we got beforehand?
All the information we got beforehand. The information is part of the record.
Not just tonight, but all of this that we got?
The information is part of the record. But anything that's post-appeal is not relevant, which denies deliberation.
Okay. Mr. Shurelich.
And to that end, I just want to make sure we're talking about the right thing here. So regardless of, and while I feel for you, quite, Mr. Boyd, regardless of how egregious a mistake the building department may have made, we're trying to determine here whether or not the HPC acted egregious or capricious with regard to simply their decision on whether or not this gable roof was appropriate for the building. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Preston, bring us...
So just to go back to make sure that there's clarity. The process has two ways. Like if I buy a historical building, I have two ways that I can go about that. One is go directly to HPC. The other, if there needs to be repairs or something, I can go straight to the building department. Either one of those processes is valid. Right? Okay. When, some of the information that I saw in the appeal, I have questions about, so it's the stuff that was written in there. There was a request, apparently, Mr. Boyd, and this goes to the issue of process. And my concern is, it sounds like, based on what I read, there's a question in here, that the process is somewhat confusing, that there's, you know, information being given here and there. So back in 2011, there was some attempt to begin the process of repair. Has there been any changes in any staffing or anything since this whole thing first started and now? I'm wondering, like, what's the difference? It seems like, you know, positions have changed a little bit. Has there been any real...
I think the record is consistent, and I think if I get at the core of your question, the changes are the differences between a routine maintenance exclusion or a need, or a certificate of appropriateness, which has to undergo a public hearing and the board for a decision. HPC is a quasi-judicial body, just like you are right now. So at the beginning, Mr. Boyd presented to our administrator at the time, Catherine Hostel, that he needed to clad the roof to protect it from the elements. And given the choice of some materials, Catherine had, she made a decision with some latitude, choosing a different material to be able to provide the flat roof instead of what had been on there previously, if it was EPDA or I don't know. The effect was to protect the landmark as a whole. So the HPC staff was acting, you know, as kind of an emergency mediator, trying to make sure that they can allow some material that Mr. Boyd said he had access to, to be able to clad the roof, but not change the design or the style or do anything. So we clarify those repairs.
Let me ask a question about that. So one of the things I think I read in here was about the importance, like weighing the difference between saving a structure or public detriment to whether this was the right or the wrong.
Right.
Architecture, right?
The HPC, by ordinance, has to consider three elements, and that is the appropriateness, which is architectural style material used, you know, not plastic or wood in cases or masonary, and also design elements. Or if there are changes, proposed changes, like mutations to a building, then we have to choose something that's sympathetic.
So I don't have a lot of time, so I apologize. I understand that.
Right.
So at that time, the building, as I know, I've driven by it a million times, so it was like falling apart. What I'm hearing is that there were all kinds of activity happening in the building that was of public detriment. So when he purchased the property, it was really about making sure that he created a safer space. That was...
Right, to protect it from the elements.
Is it fair to say, yeah, to prevent deterioration, but also to protect the community from activity and so on and so forth?
Right.
So that first kind of initiation was really about, it's more important to make sure this public was a safe.
Yeah.
Versus, it's okay if we change whatever we got to change, but let's get this, let's save this.
There were no changes proposed. It was just an alteration of material.
Okay.
The opportunity to make...
Whatever, whatever. Right.
Gotcha. So then, when he came back in 2015...
Thank you. 15 minutes over. Time is there. We're on track. Common council should review the action they're doing in the appeal before then, and determine whether we're certain, okay, we already are doing that now. With each member having the opportunity to comment before a motion, a disposal of the appeal is accepted by the chairperson. That is exactly where we are, so our turn. Then should we just go back down, and we have final statements, and that's what they're saying to us?
That's what the procedure seems to require.
Okay, so then, she was still talking. Now, this is not necessarily asking questions, Tom. This is more comment, Tom. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we don't, we have completed our asking of the questions of both parties?
With the opportunity to comment before motion on disposition. So it would be what you would do normally as you consider a motion, but it's pre-motion.
So this, a question for you. Do our comments come after the motion, or do our comments come before the motion?
Apparently, with this procedure, they come before the motion, because it says, with each council member having the opportunity to comment before a motion of disposition on the appeal is accepted by the chairperson.
Okay, so therefore, I would go from the right to the left, starting with first district, you know, first district, second, and just work our way down. And close out with Karen White again, tonight.
Okay.
I'll go this way. Go ahead.
So I would, I can say like what I would say, what my thought is.
You can have a seat, you're not going to comment for any more.
Um, I'm inclined to find in favor of Mr. Boyd, Mr. Boyd, I'm sorry, because, and I wasn't able to ask all the questions, but based on the information I read, there was also a, there was a process in which he wasn't sure about an appeals process, and he asked about that and was not given clarity, information, and was actually told that there's, they don't disclose it. This is one of the questions I wanted to ask. Based on the information I have in here, I felt like that was an action that was arbitrary, capricious, and a piece of discretion. Aside from that, I would also find in favor of Mr. Boyd, because it seems, especially since we've kind of clarified with the discussion in my mind, that the building department was indeed where the ball was dropped in this process. But it is a part of the process for getting all the information to the resident. I think that we have to make sure that we're not holding our citizens responsible for something that is a responsibility of the city. And the historic preservation is an entity of the city, the building department's an entity of the city, and whatever their procedures are, we have to make sure that they are being followed. And I feel like he was denied a, like, due process, which would be a violation probably of something. I'm not a lawyer. But it was certainly outside of what I understand, especially after this hearing, of the procedures to be. So I think that there was some arbitrary and capricious actions, but also actions taken that were outside of procedure. I also feel that his actions, if we look at this process from beginning to end, his actions were certainly made in order to reduce public detriment. And so I think that that is something that we need to consider as well.
Yeah, that's it.
Mr. Shurelich. I agree with Ms. Wood, Preston, Shirley, some regards. And as I mentioned earlier, I actually have a friend who went, got a building permit... Um, and as I mentioned earlier, uh, I, I actually have a friend who went, uh, got a building permit, um, for, uh, a garage extension, uh, found out, uh, later, once it had virtually gone up, that, uh, that height wasn't permitted, and then, um, so maybe we need to look at some of these, these issues with the building department. And again, why I feel for Mr. Boyd, what he's going through, uh, I, I do think that's a completely separate issue, however, from whether or not that, that, um, HPC, with regard to determining whether or not this cable roof was appropriate for the building, was arbitrary and capricious. I think they went through the proper channels to determine that, um, so it's, it's my contention that, uh, they did not do anything that was, that was fall under that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms.-
Broden.
Broden. Thank you. Sorry.
Um, the denial of the certificate of appropriateness, um, I would say is on point here. It seems to me, uh, Mr. Boyd exceeded the authorization that he sought, um, for the routine maintenance, um, uh, and that, um, having put in, uh, put in the application, uh, and the information with the sworn statement wasn't part of the earlier record, um, so we can't, you know, go that direction. So based on what was available at the time of the hearing, uh, I would, um, support the denial of COA, um, as the changes were beyond, uh, the group sta, the group B standards.
Thank you.
And did detract, and I would, I would suggest, did detract from the original form and the arch, architecture and the integrity of this, uh, property as a historic landmark. Sorry, I'm tired.
Thank you. Mr. Dr. Warner?
Uh, it seems to me that the, clearly, uh, the ball was dropped with regards to communication between the building department and, uh, and, uh, HPC with regards to the five, five-day issue. That, however, couldn't change the fact that, uh, HPC, I believe, acted appropriately by issuing, uh, repair, maintenance-only agreement. It's not their fault that they weren't given a, uh, notice appropriately, and when, uh, timing elapsed and it did come back for their, uh, request for certificate of appropriateness, it's virtually impossible to, uh, give a certificate of appropriateness, and it's inappropriate, uh, what was done. Not that it was illegal, that's a whole nother issue, not that it was, uh, not a nice design for a person who wants it that way, but the request was for a certificate of appropriateness. If a flat roof was where it began, and it morphed, I don't know how the HPC could issue a certificate of appropriateness. There may be some other mechanism to arrive there, I don't know what it is, but I find that their actions would have been, given the record that we have, uh, appropriate and in the appropriate manner, and doing what was appropriate, given their statutory responsibilities with regards to historic preservation. I feel like Mr. Boyd finds himself in a very difficult situation, um, but I, it's, requesting an issue of our certificate of appropriateness is, is not the way to fix it. That doesn't make it right.
Thank you. Me. Um, I had a question regarding the process. The process is a part of, um, a, um, historical, um, they shared it over there, there's two different ways, and firstly, if we're denying that it was their process, but it is their process. And then, if you have two roofs that you own, get into your home, and one was messed up, then that's your fault. Okay? And you have a responsibility to take care of that. And we have, uh, after David here, and everything else, and all these other things, that is looking at that. Um, I think that process, um, when you start off wrong, it, there's, it's a big problem. I was teaching a class on what I used to be, and I got into the class, and lo and behold, when I got there, um, not one student had a book. Their syllabus was there, not one. I checked with the department. They had done everything else. Somehow, somewhere in the bookstore, somebody dropped the bu, ball, didn't order the books. And it was a summer course, so we were going fast. By the time we'd get in, half my class was gonna be over. Now, do I, what if they've already paid for their course, they already do everything else, what we gonna do? And so I had to sit there and adjust every single thing, um, to in order to, um, make sure that academics and the core courses were done. Uh, it was a crazy summer, that summer, but I had to adjust to make sure, because could I talk to the department? The department did theirs. Um, I did mine, I was prepared, students were prepared. Somebody down in the bookstore messed that up. I had to take ownership of that situation, because they did it, they were an employee of I used to be, I was an employee of I used to be. And so I had to adjust my issues so everything could be done. I could sit there and fuss with the students all day long, and the only thing they're gonna do is mess up my evaluations. And so, therefore, I adjusted my time, because the process started off day one wrong, and there was no way it was gonna end right, unless I made some modifications that were unusual. I taught for a long time in my life, and I had years in it, never had that situation happen. But in that situation, I had to make tremendous adjustments, and I learned from there every single time to make sure weeks in advance. I learned a lot from that. So, yeah, it was, it was my situation, I had to take ownership for it, and I think that the combination should have been made when it comes down to these situations here, uh, without the procedures. The procedures were wrong, and the wrong thing was started off from that standpoint. And so I cannot support that. Um, it really, um, when it comes down to the building commission, uh, if that's not right, and it's been doing, doing something there, that's a serious situation. Um, there needs to be more clarity when it comes down to that document, the secures. That has to be done from that standpoint. And so I would like to look at this, I, in the words of my mother, I would call this sloppy. It shouldn't, in ten years, I see why this shouldn't have got here tonight. They should have been more, working more, recognize this is a mess, we're gonna work with you. Um, Mr. Boyd, I will say in fairness to the area, um, keep saying area plant, that's been on my brain all night, um, historically, um, HPC, um, some of the movement, I recognize you were under a lot of pressure, probably should have, um, not gone as far as you did. I would say that. And I, and I said, you know, part of that got to the point where, if these folks are not telling me right, who cares about them? I hear that coming across, okay? And so you moved ahead with all of that. This didn't make it everything right, it probably made more people say, I'm gonna vote against you, whatever, but the bottom line is, the process started off wrong. And I do believe that the ends do not justify the means. I really, I mean, if the means were wrong, the end, nine out of ten times, is wrong too. Okay? And you can't justify that. And so, therefore, I will, um, be in favor of Mr. Boyd.
Um, the legal issues here are, uh, beyond my, uh, ability to say what's right and wrong. I think there just ought to be a standard of reasonableness applied to this, and I come down on the opposite side of, uh, of, uh, Mr. Davis and, and, uh, Ms. Preston, because I think that a reasonable person, when they buy either a historic landmark or a home or building in a historic district, has got to know that there are probably all sorts of regulations and limitations to what can be done. So when you have a hole in the roof that you need to undertake some emergency repair to preserve the rest of the building, um, and somebody, and you're permitted to depart from a standard of one material to another, that's a rather small accommodation, as opposed to with, with that metal roof permit, saying, oh, now I'm gonna put on an addition, and now I'm gonna put on a peaked roof, and now I'm gonna do it. When you buy a, when you buy a historic home or, or building like this, um, you, it's light fixtures, it's window frames, it's, it's, it's trim pieces, it's things that sometimes might seem ridiculous, but that's what goes along with this historic landmark or historic home. And a reasonable person knows that. So before, I would say to Mr. Boyd, it's unfortunate, but a, a reasonable person, before he put a whole bunch of money into changing the look and style and structure of this home, what made, or, and building, what made it a historic landmark in the first place, would have made sure that what he's doing is the right thing to do. I've not been to many historic preservation hearings in my life, but the couple that I've had, I felt sorry for a guy, uh, because he had to change some porch trim, um, at considerable expense, but those are the rules of the game, and you gotta play by the rules. You can't just take carte blanche and go and do whatever you want, just because you think you have the permit or, or the opportunity to do so. So I'm gonna come down on the opposite side of this. That's all.
Um, I'm inclined to rule in favor of Mr. Boyd. Um, I don't think the procedures required by law were observed, whether or not that was, uh, the fault of HPC or not.
Lean last again. Uh, I'm reading from page seven, um, of the information that we received, and it, and it states that first, HPC did not receive a copy of the building permit application that was filed by Mr. Boyd in October 2015. And clearly, it states that, um, the guidelines, the timeframe was not adhered to, and the building department admitted that they made a mistake and failed to, uh, forward the application. And regardless of not whether Mr. Boyd, uh, went ahead and, he was operating, uh, I can't speak for him, under the understanding that that building permit had been approved. The record clearly acknowledges that it was not, and there were a lot of procedural issues that I believe, um, really should have been addressed even before it, it had been presented at this particular state of the appeal process. I don't think that any of us would want to say to anyone, any of our citizens, well, you know, you just have to eat the $23,000. Uh, I think there could have been a better way, but regardless, what we have before us is what we have before us, and I will be supporting Mr. Boyd.
Yeah, I would like to ask, um, um, attorney, what's the next move?
Uh, the next move is to make a mo, a member of the council to make a motion, one way or the other.
And do you have to make that motion in terms of your favor, or you, you have to base it on something, or what do you have to do?
If you make it, if you motion, if you move to deny, you've basically said that you, that you probably ought to, to, um, I give a reason for your denial.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, based on the fact that procedures required by law were not observed, um, I would like to, um, rule in favor of Mr. Boyd by accepting his appeal, is that a-
No, you would be, um, denying the-
HPC.
HPC's, um-
Rejection of-
Recommendation.
Okay. By denying the HPC's recommendation.
Second.
Okay. We have much in the second. Uh, we'd like to ask, um, clerk father to take the roll, please.
Denial of the HPC recommendation, Councilmember Kelly.
Nay.
Councilmember Broden.
Denial of the recommendation.
Denial of the HPC recommendation.
Rejection of the HPC. I'm sorry, three, five people are talking to me at once, I'm sorry.
Transcription from the, uh, transcription from the clerk.
From, from-
Off to my tray.
I can state it as a rejection of the HPC's denial.
Okay.
Of certificate of appropriateness.
Nay.
Councilmember Varnik.
Nay.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bro, I mean, I'm sorry. Councilmember Boyd.
Nay.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Four to four.
Okay. Attorney, what do we do next?
It stands.
I'm not sure with that, I would have to consult.
You probably will have to use-
I think the denial would stand.
The president has to just-
The, the lower court.
Well, he's not here, so he can't. I have a question, point. I have a question here.
Yes, ma'am.
In terms of our attorney, what would be the process now, or would you have to research and get that way? I would need to research the effect of, of a time. Okay. And I think that would be the best, so we're not just-
Isn't it, um, yeah, you, I would defer your, my understanding is, there's been, at the time what happens, it, it's, it's dead.
Does the HPC's attorney know this answer, or have any dust mutation?
They don't speak.
Mr. Davis, what you just said, by that, you mean it's, it's firm? I mean, the decision is firm ever since we've had it?
Uh-
I always read about our attorney.
That's correct.
I'm not, I wouldn't be a-
I, I, that's probably be your take on it, I would still like your answer to confirm that, Dave. I understand.
What I will do, because, because, um, HPC's counsel is correct, um, in the court system, tied both by court of appeals, would mean that the lower court's decision stands.
That is correct.
Which would mean the HPC's decision stands, but I don't know what that means in, in the context of a, of a quasi-judicial body.
What happens, um, what would be the next procedure? I mean, let's say, Mr. Davis, I just, was that procedure, was it, is that final?
Until there's a, just, until there's a final ruling, um, the appeal time for either side would not begin to run until that's determined and the parties are notified.
So there's a, I mean, the appeal time, what happens when the appeal time is, is final, I suppose, I'm saying to you.
And without, my understanding of the appeal process is that within thirty days after the decision is made by this body, the side that, the side that, um, the side that-
Lost.
But lost, would have the right to appeal to a court.
Okay. Is there, is there a particular court, or is it state court, is there, what court?
I, I'd have to, I'd have to review that.
Okay. That's all that needs needed, and so I have-
To the circuit court, court of appeals.
Probably, probably circuit court, that would be more likely. Okay, good, questions?
Judicial appeal, and I don't know whether it goes directly to a court of appeals or goes to the local court.
Okay, I got you. Yes, um, Ms. Preston?
His hand up first, I have to-
I didn't see it, I forgot.
If we were to potentially vote again, if that's the correct procedure, we wouldn't need to hear testimony again. They wouldn't, you wouldn't need to come sit through another council meeting. If we need to, at the next council meeting, have another vote, you wouldn't need to come and sit through five hours of a meeting.
Yeah, there wouldn't be testimony taken, but I think the parties would have the right to be present.
Oh, you could certainly be present, I'm just saying, because we-
I have a question about that, though.
Okay, questions, okay, you have three questions coming up. We have one from Ms. Preston, one from Ms. White, and one from Councilman Boyd.
Ms. Preston's next. Um, I just have a question about that first, and then I have another question. Um, if we don't hear this again, if, uh, another council person has been present, how can he get that information? Is he supposed to watch the video, basically?
Yes, he would have to. He would have to review the-
Yeah, maybe, since he, I know he may be here next time. Um, then I have another question, and I don't know how this goes, and maybe, I guess, one thing I'd like to know, and maybe this is separate from, like, all this ruling stuff, but maybe the attorney has to look it up, is, um, what would another step be besides, like, the courts? There were some things thrown out about, like, whose responsibility, and, like, in terms of these parties working things out, and being able to move forward without another court hearing, or even another hearing here, what would that process look like? Would they have to come, would you report us again about something, would we recommend something?
That's probably, it's really a matter for both, for the parties to consider on their own, really, figure it out. We, yeah, I mean, they would have to consider their options.
Okay, that must be surprising. Ms. Ms., um, White had a question.
My question was, am I hard to take another vote? And that would be in terms of our president being able to do so, and not being present to actually hear the, um, conversation, even though it's taped, I wanna make sure that that is proper. And again, you can't respond to that.
Ma'am, can I just, for the record, in case there's a, uh, a court of appeal, could I just say, are a, the HPC's respectful, um, objection to a revote, uh, I believe, for almost here, uh, to spread on the agenda now three times, to postpone it twice, or have to comment upon that?
I agree.
We would subject to a revote, maybe for, for, um, how we decided today. I probably think that, basically, legally, that, um, the decision is firm, so, obviously, that I need to put that on record.
I agree.
That's all right. Okay, Mr. White, you had a question, what's your answer? Hey, uh, Councilwoman Broden, got a question?
That was my concern, that, uh, we're winging it here. And, uh, you know, I'm sure there's statute to refer to on procedure, when there are cases of ties, et cetera, so, um, I would, yes, I would, yeah, encourage just to gamble this closed, and, um, less illegals, folks get at it.
Question for you, as we close up tonight, um, how would you notify us, um, this is to our-